Like our first action item is the approval of the minutes from August 5th, 2020. I think we only had two individuals at that meeting. I think John and Greg were the only two here.
Yeah, that's true.
Either of you want to make a motion on those?
I would make the motion that we accept the minutes of our last meeting in August.
Got a motion? You want to second that?
Should I make a motion?
You just second. We have a motion. You just need to second it. Okay, got a motion to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving into public hearing, our next item is conditional use permit for 700 North T-Mobile Cell Tower. Dave, you gonna go over that with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna be pretty brief. This is not distinct from other similar proposals that you've seen in the past. This is simply a proposal to exchange and update some equipment at an existing mobile communications tower site located in, it's called Little Cleveland, the park that's on the interior of this block between 5th and, sorry, 6th and 7th North. They're between 4th and 5th East. We've had a few different conversations with some of the engineering folks that are involved on the design for the proposed facility here. The new equipment will not, for example, consume additional power. It will not produce any additional or higher levels of any of the, the, I'm gonna speak as a layman here, right? Any additional power impacts, if you will, in terms of output and different things like that. Short of saying that this is just a matter of a routine update. I think basically that's what it is. And as much as that's the case, staff has recommended that this proposal be approved, subject to the applicant, meeting the conditions that we've spelled out in the staff report, which incidentally are identical to the conditions that the commission imposed with the previous approval of a similar upgrade that was made to this site just a couple of years ago. So that being the case, I will also mention that conditional uses are among the items that the planning commission is the land use authority for. So these next two items, we look to the planning commission to take action, that is to either approve or deny the proposals rather than to make a recommendation to the city council.
Anyone have any questions for staff?
Dave, are these, are these towers, or is this particular tower going to be any taller or cast a larger, a larger shadow, if you will, in any way, or is it just changing out equipment?
In essence, it's just changing out equipment. Little different configuration. We wouldn't say that, you know, from a scale perspective, it's any larger.
Similar to what we've had in the past few years with the cell companies upgrading things on their towers.
That's exactly how I describe it, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll move into public hearing. If there's anyone that has any comments and would like to address the commission on this issue, you'd approach the microphone, state your name, and where you live, and then feel free to share your thoughts.
My name is Ralph Brinkerhoff. That tower's in my backyard. We just did this a couple of months ago. How frequently are they gonna be doing this? It's not like two guys in a tool patch, or in a tool pouch up there working. It's a bunch of heavy equipment, noise. It's just, it's real annoying. It's, it's in a residential neighborhood, not a commercial neighborhood. Last time it went as good as we could expect. They quit at 5 o'clock and went home. Before that, they'd worked all night with lights and everything. I just want to make sure that they're gonna do that again. You know, be out of there by 5 o'clock and let people eat their dinner in peace. And then again, how frequently are they gonna be doing this change? It's real annoying. If you had one in your backyard, you'd know what I meant. Any, they made it, is there any way to know that, or?
Dave, you want to address that? Is there any city ordinance or anything that says hours that they can work on it, or how frequently they can go and work on it?
In terms of frequency? No. We don't have any stipulations that say, you know, you know, maybe one modification or upgrade per year, anything like that at all. In terms of hours that they can be working at the site, you know, on the physical improvements that they've, they've made this request to be able to make, I guess I'd say two things. First of all, we do have hours of operation for any kind of construction activity. And this, in our view, maybe I'll just speak for myself, in my view, certainly fits into that category. I think in this case, those hours are far too broad, given, as this gentleman pointed out, the fact that this really is in the middle of a neighborhood. So we wouldn't want to be, again, just in my opinion, as permissive as what the ordinance allows, which is really why these are conditional uses. That affords you, as the land use authority, the opportunity to impose more strict conditions on, for example, working hours than what the ordinance otherwise has. And again, I think that's why the conditions were imposed the last time. I'm glad to hear that, I think there were some bad experiences previous to that with all different kinds of things that happened.
If you had a light plant in your backyard at midnight run by the diesel engine, you know what I'm talking about.
That's easy to appreciate, right, as a concern?
If that were to happen, obviously it's after hours, who, who would have sent us in contact to get that shut down? What would they do?
Let's say it's at midnight, the police department. Simply put, dispatch.
Phone call to dispatch, and they could come out and they say,
They'd make some effort to sort it out before they took some action. Or the next morning, you know, just getting in touch with maybe somebody in our office. But, you know, that being said, again, I think the point is, is spot on. You know, that indeed is why this is on your agenda, instead of having these particular uses be maybe just permitted as part of how they're allowed throughout the community. And I guess I'm particularly, you know, again, glad to hear that the last upgrade that they made, that that went better than the previous ones. And that's largely why we as staff have simply recommended that the same conditions carry over with this.
That condition is specifically mentioned on?
I've read, I just noticed that, yeah, so.
But we could always add that as condition six?
Certainly, yeah, or even, yeah, there's a reference to timeframe and things like that in condition four. That could be modified, however you want to do it.
What does the current code say for permissible hours of operation?
I believe it's 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. It's on that order.
We can establish that as what we, maybe not even normal work hours should be sufficient for what they're doing.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know what some of these items are, but changing three radio modules and an antenna and some cable, I don't know how big a project that is, but it doesn't sound like it's too big and heavy equipment, man lift, I'm sure.
They have to get a machine to raise them up 80 feet in the air, and then the guy up there screaming at the guy down there, you know, "We need this. How about send this up?"
Yeah, and if I, if-
You can probably hear them from the city hall, you know, when they're hollering at each other.
If that were my backyard, I wouldn't want that starting at 7:00 AM. So I would say 8, 8 to 5, 8 to 6, 6 at the latest would be acceptable.
Aren't there city ordinances for construction hours and the noise that's created? I believe there is. And so if these guys follow those same ordinances, they, they should be okay.
Well, this last one was, was okay. I mean, it was annoying and obnoxious, but it was-
Do they go through your property to access it?
No. The Pinnaker family donated that land to the citizens of Spanish Fork for a park. And they left a little narrow driveway that the trucks will barely fit in. Because they said if it was wider than that down the road sometime, some greedy city council would subdivide it and sell it for housing lots. Well, the Pinnakers weren't far seeing enough 50 years ago to see cell towers. So there's a, there's a public driveway that goes in there.
Who owns the actual property?
City.
City does?
It's the city.
It's a city park, yeah.
The Pinnakers donated it to the city for a park. And when I, when I moved in, all the residents used to take turns watering and mowing it. And then the city took it over 20 years ago. So.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's on public property, it's, but it's just right in your backyard.
Any additional comments that you want to share?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
As long as they'll go by that. I can throw a rock from my backyard and hit them. That's how close it is.
Please don't do that, no.
I know what I'd like to throw at them sometimes, but I won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. Any comments from commissioners?
I think we should add a, just a work time in there along the line. I like the line, the guidelines you had there. 8 to 5, 8 to 6, something like that. Specify it. I think we can dictate what those hours are and add it as either part of condition four or another condition on there.
Okay, just spell it out, plain and clear, so there's.
I guess 8 to 6, sounds good to me.
8, 6, probably.
That should give them adequate time as well, being fair to both parties.
Thank you, right.
Any thoughts?
Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. So this is, this is an approval, right? We're not sending this on, this is, okay. So I'd like to propose that we approve the 7th North T-Mobile Cell Tower conditional use with the findings and conditions expressed in the staff report. With in addition to that, that we set work hours for the upgrade to be between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM.
I second it.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, looks like we've got another one. 2500 East T-Mobile Cell Tower.
In terms of the physical changes that would be made, this proposal is similar to the last one. It's, it's different, obviously, in terms of its location. And historically, we've been much less concerned about impacting, you know, Canyon Road directly and just that surrounding area. There are homes both to the south of the subject site and to the north, but this is more remote from any dwellings than what we were just talking about. So at least as staff, we haven't recommended that this be approved with the same conditions as the last one, but certainly it's your purview to do whatever you care as the commission. Just like the last one, we'd ask you to make a decision on it in terms of approving or denying. And staff has recommended that this be approved. But again, with, with different conditions, less restrictive conditions than what we just talked about.
Any questions for Dave? Alright, this one's also a public hearing, so at this time we'll move into public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk on this cell tower? Just state your name.
Mihal Chanezki, here in Spanish Fork. So I'm looking around at that, and, you know, there's a substation here and a new fire station going in there and so forth. There's not a lot of houses, you know, on the property, but, you know, it backs up to the houses. And so I guess I'm just here to speak for the people who it backs up against. If it doesn't make sense to have reasonable, reasonable hours of work hours, just because they're not here to complain about it, because it happened last time, doesn't mean that, that might not be the right thing to do. There's, you know, eight houses right there.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Alright, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. Commission thoughts?
I think the same kind of provisions ought to include this site. Like this gentleman was saying, there are homes in the area, and just because they're not right there as close, maybe they can't hit them with a rock, but they're close enough that they'll know the construction's going on. So I like the idea of, of including those hours of work.
Okay. Anyone else? Alright. John, you want to make a motion with that?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2500 East T-Mobile Sour Tower conditional use permit with the findings and conditions that are in the document, along with the inclusion of work hours being between the hours of 8 and, 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM.
Got a motion, going to have a second? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Alright, next agenda item. We've got some zone change and preliminary plats to talk about. First one is the Ridge Phase 6 and 7.
Thank you. So like Chairman Oither mentioned, there are kind of two parts to this, zone change and preliminary plat. The proposed zone change would result in the subject properties being zoned R3. The preliminary plat, in essence, is an amendment of an existing approved preliminary plat. The preliminary plat for the Ridge development, which is located to the north, kind of surrounding the, the ecclesiastical facility here, wrapping up the US 6 and then back over to 2550 East or Spanish Fork Parkway. So this particular image here is just showing the two portions of, of that project that are proposed to be added here and here. And again, those are areas that have not yet been zoned for the type of development that is, is part of the proposed preliminary plat. Don't want to be redundant, but again, the proposed zone change is to R3, which would match the remaining part of the Ridge development. This is something that this applicant's been working on for a number of years, and I'll let him speak to the details of, you know, maybe how it came together and just his thought in terms of design and that type of a thing. This project has been in the works, under construction even, for quite some time now. They're just getting started, I think, on their fourth phase. Getting into this area right here. You may have noticed that much of the infrastructure for these other phases is probably nearing completion at this point as well. These two additional phases will introduce a new product to the Ridge right now. They're either two or three-story townhomes. I think it's, it's in essence just two different styles, two different floor plans and that sort of a thing. This area here, which is adjacent to the site that the, the new city fire station's been constructed on right here, those are single-family homes. Located on basically footprints where the yard maintenance and different things like that is handled communally, much like the rest of the development. The staff report has the images that we've been provided relative to the style that's proposed for those homes. It's, it's distinct, I would say, from what we've seen in other projects in Spanish Fork. At the same time, I think it's very fitting. And I think this is just happenstance that, from a design perspective, fairly contemporary type of a style, it seems to be somewhat consistent with the fire station. I think it fits in well with what's been constructed with the townhomes and their clubhouse and different things like that. And that's something that we as staff have certainly appreciated. The part of the project over here that is proposed to be developed with additional townhomes, the applicant's made some changes just in the last few weeks relative to the layout of that particular area. We as staff appreciate the changes that have been made. And particularly inasmuch as, as we don't really see this necessarily as a, as a significantly new introduction to the neighborhood, but rather the continuation or expansion of an existing project that we feel really has been well received in the marketplace. We think it's been a good addition to this part of the community. It's been relatively easy for us to recommend that the proposed zone change be approved. Particularly with the, the recent changes that the applicant has made to the layout of that townhome part. We think that that will work very, very well. And, you know, all in all, like I said, we think this will be a good addition to the community. I want to just speak really quickly to the image that we have here. The configuration of the site, I think, says a lot. I haven't worked with very many developers that are trying to make productive and beneficial use of a site that is as gerrymandered, or maybe just gerrymandered looking as this one. That's genuinely a challenge. And I think that's created certainly some challenges for the applicant to work through in terms of how to use that space efficiently and to make it, you know, ultimately become a nice neighborhood to live in. But we appreciate the direction that the project's gone in, and we think this is a good addition to the rest of the Ridge. Just a couple of other points relative to the proposals that are before tonight. First of all, the zone change, so there is a public hearing for this item because of that. And you are acting as a recommending body to the city council on the zone change. And because the preliminary plat is a master planned development, likewise, you're gonna be, well, you're asked to make a recommendation to the city council for both the zone change then and the proposed preliminary plat.
Any questions for staff?
Phase 6 and 7 are the only additions? All other phases have been previously approved?
Correct.
Right here is showing a 6-foot wrought iron fence, and then a 6-foot masonry fence along and going right along here. It shows it on the plan, but are they bound to do it if we approve, if we recommend approval of this plat the way it is, or do I need to call out those fences?
They are bound to do that. That's what is consistent with the city's ordinance.
Okay, good.
So.
Thank you.
The other questions? Is the applicant here and want to speak on this?
Good evening. My name is Jesse Brimhall, developer of the Ridge. I think Dave did a pretty good introduction. It has been a challenging piece, and the addition of these two pieces, really just to try and really finish it up. And Phase 2 that comes off of Canyon Road, we were putting in basically a half road, or, you know, half plus 10. The opportunity came to purchase what was the Braithwaite property, which is our proposed Phase 7. And that would then give us the ability to benefit off of our improvements that we're putting in for that road, which is High Ridge Drive. So we were able to work with the Braithwaites and purchase that property and designed what is Phase 7. We want to introduce a kind of a new product, which would be Phase 6, which is a single-family home, but in a maintained subdivision. You know, a lot of people look at townhomes and they think, "Oh, that's great, but it's not for me." And so we wanted to be able to offer something else that may be for them, so that they want to partake in some of the benefits of that type of community, but not share a wall. And it's been really well received. We've got a lot of excitement and interest in, in those homes. They're big homes, upwards of 4,000 square feet. They'll have basements. But we, we went after a, a modern design, something that matches, like Dave said, the, the fire station and, and similar to what we've been doing. And so we're excited about it, and we feel that it'll, it'll be a good addition. So, hope, hope it's received the same.
What's your, what will be the price range of these townhomes?
So our town-
Homes?
The, the single-family.
Yeah.
I wish things were cheaper. I'm telling you, it is a really frustrating and difficult time to be building right now. But our kind of price point on the single-family homes will be, you know, 330, 340, up to, you know, probably four and a quarter-ish. Just depending on the, we'll, we'll have three different floor plans. One will be a rambler with all the living on the main floor. And then the other two will be two-story homes. One, one a little bit larger than the other, just to kind of give a, a broad option there. Our townhomes, though, start in the mid-2s and go up to the mid-3s. So we're, we're covering really the lower end to the middle end of the market there. And I think, you know, as far as townhomes go, we are offering probably the, some of the most affordable townhomes out there right now. Even considering, I think, we offer a lot more. And we have, you know, the clubhouse with the pool and other amenities, so.
With your single-family, is the layout of the landscaping, will that be similar to your townhomes, or will the property owners be able to put fences in?
Yeah, so we, we've designed them so that they will have what they call common, limited common area behind them. So they will be able to privately fence those backyards. It's actually our intention to do that as part of, it'll be kind of a turnkey that will provide those fenced with landscaping. And so that is, that is the plan. We feel it's easier to manage that way than to just give people free rein when we're trying to, you know, maintain it and keep it manageable. But I, I think it'll, it'll, it'll look really nice.
Even if they do their own thing in their landscaping, you're, you're still maintaining all that area?
Yeah, so they will have, we'll maintain the front and side yards. The backyard will be given as an option to them. The, so I, I developed Somerset Village. We did the same thing. Those had optional private backyards. And we gave people the ability to maintain them themselves or to contract separately with the maintenance company to have them come in and maintain it. So it, it worked, I think it's worked well, so.
Jesse, what's the height of these townhomes right here, 7?
The townhomes there?
Uh-huh, the height.
So there will be two different styles there. They're basically two-story on the ends, and then the two in the middle will be three-story. And I think the peak on, so they'll go from about 35 on the ends to about 45 in the middle. It's, it's very consistent with, it is the same plans that we've been building. Nothing, nothing new on those.
Maybe you could help me with the fencing on, on Phase 6 here? I guess that most of that and along the church property here, you'll have, you'll have solid fencing there. What about this, along the backyards of this phase?
Thanks to the city, the fencing's already in on the north side of the fire station. And so we're gonna match that coming back south to Canyon Road. But then going north, do you have a pointer? How's that work? So, pardon my shake there, but right here, that's tough. This section right- This section right here will be stone to match what the, what the city's already done. But then going north, sorry, north in this section dividing. I don't know, it all stopped shaking. That's a long ways away. This section right here where the townhomes are separated by the single family, we're proposing just a vinyl fence, which I think is within the standard when it's, when it's not separate property owners. But everywhere else along the perimeter of the subdivision will be either a six-foot masonry fence where required, or like along here, along 2550, this will be an open fence, you know, so it doesn't feel like a fortress. So this will be an open wrought iron fence. But all this will be, sorry, this right here will all be masonry. And then this will be like a wrought iron that's open, you know, just for aesthetics to give a more open look, so.
More of the kind of parking. I see that we have the, in the top corner there, on that note three, there's-
Here.
Yeah, this is a parking. I don't see any drives to the townhomes.
So we're going to put some parking off of High Ridge Drive here and off of High Ridge Drive here. It'll be additional parking that-
How many stalls?
It, I believe we'll have three and three, and then there's three, I think there's nine in this parking lot. I believe it's, it's within the requirement. And then, you know, every home has a two-car garage.
Similar to what you have over on Highway six?
Yes.
That area?
Yep.
So that area between those buildings are going to be identical to what is already built?
This area here?
Yes.
No. No, the, the city standard has changed. So what we've done previous and what was approved here has changed. These, originally, we designed them as a 26-foot common driveway, so 26 feet between buildings. The city standard has changed, which is now 25 feet of asphalt with a three-foot buffer between the asphalt or concrete and the home. So it acts on each side, so it actually is 31 feet. And that's, I don't believe this shows it, but one of the red line conditions or requirements for approval is that we meet the new city standard, and that's our plan. That design should have been submitted. I apologize that it wasn't, but I had a talk with my engineer just before the meeting. But that is our plan. It will meet the new city standard, which is instead of 26 feet, it's 31 feet between buildings.
Two-car garages on those units as well?
Yes.
No driveways, though, is that right?
Yeah, just the common driveway, just, just there.
Which doesn't facilitate any parking there?
Correct. Just a, just a loading, unloading, and no long-term.
What about, what's the road called, High Ridge Drive? Can you park on that?
Legally, yes, but we don't advertise it.
So it's a street road, so they could park on it?
It's a, yeah.
Or a city road, a public road?
So we've basically got 24 units there with two-car garages and then 15 parking stalls outside the garages.
Boats? My house. No, it's a good question. We don't have, we don't facilitate any of that. We've-
So phase two is already done. It's in, is that right?
It's, it's under construction right now.
Under construction now? And what are, what parking do you have for phase two that's currently under construction other than their two-car garage?
There's two stalls here and three stalls up here. And then there's a couple stalls across the street there. And that's, that's what's there.
Dave, does the city have any concerns, or you feel like they've met the parking requirement for, for these two new phases?
They've met the parking requirement, and I think they have two or three additional spaces.
Two or three?
Above and beyond the city's requirement. I, we're comfortable with where they're at, but certainly acknowledge that these projects seem to require more parking in Spanish Fork than they do elsewhere along the Wasatch Front. That indeed is something that we'll be talking with the planning commission more about in upcoming weeks and months. I certainly would be comfortable if the commission were to instruct staff, maybe to work with the applicant, to refine his plans, even maybe just to try to come up with a couple of more parking spaces. I think every one of them likely will get used. I do like the idea that there is on-street parking on a street that isn't loaded, so to speak, doesn't have driveways on it, which I think will, will keep any, any on-street parking in the development instead of having people park on Canyon Road like we do see at Somerset and maybe one or two other places along that road. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of my guarded recommendation that I think we're comfortable with, with where we're at here.
So would we be able to move forward with the recommendation and then have them make those changes prior to it going to city council?
That certainly is appropriate, or just as part of the final plat process, whatever you'd, you'd like to see.
Yeah.
So we'd make it a condition?
Correct, yeah.
I, I think I would be com, or feel more comfortable knowing there are some more parking other than just two or three.
And the city's requirement is two and a half? So they're counting the two-car garage and then another half space? You're saying that, is that what it is now?
Correct, yeah, for a master plan development. That's where it's at.
Dave, how long is this street from, on seven? I would say no one parks over here, but here to here. 200 feet, 150 feet?
A lot longer than that. Yeah, this, from this driveway to this intersection's 120, right? So.
Have you determined how many cars can safely park along that street on five, at 518? Average length of a car and then the spacing between?
No, it's not, not something.
We have done something that's a little bit unique here, and this, I mentioned that some changes have been made just in the last couple of weeks. You're well aware that for purposes of meeting a parking requirement, we're just looking at off-street parking.
Yeah.
The on-street, you know, that's where maybe we get comfortable when maybe developers write at the minimum requirement and that sort of a thing. Also, we have some folks that are pretty uptight about people parking on-street. So in this particular case, in phase seven and along that side of that street, the applicant has designed some expanded asphalt that would provide additional room to accommodate cars parallel parked along that street. And some other projects over the years, a similar thing's been done where it's been 90-degree parking. We are not comfortable with cars backing onto this street. So that, that's, I guess I'd say maybe a little bit of a creative approach that the applicant and staff have worked on to clearly meet the expectation of the code by way of providing off-street parking, making sure that there's adequate space, which effectively also then does make it, I think, just more practical for vehicles to park on the other side of the street without impeding traffic flow or that type of a thing. So my answer to your question after saying all of that is that we have identified in those pockets how many cars you could parallel park, and I think it's three, like the applicant said, in each of those two pockets, then with the additional parking in the parking lot up there. And that's how they get to that, that 0.5 spaces per unit that they need in addition to the garages.
Yet excluding the on-street parking?
Yet excluding, yes.
If we were to add a condition, asking for more parking, what, what's appropriate to ask for? What's the proper wording there? I mean, we're at two or three extra right now. Do we ask for 200 extra? Obviously not, it's a lot, but, I mean, what's reasonable? What makes sense?
You know, we're, we're not talking about a lot of additional homes, you know, at least not compared to some of the projects that you've seen recently. Personally, I, I would like the opportunity to sit down with the applicant where we have maybe just a little bit more time to look at every place where practically, you know, you could add parking and not have it be, be detrimental in terms of traffic flow or, you know, anything else for the project. It might yield four, it might yield 10.
Just whatever makes sense.
I don't want to speak for the applicant, but as we've talked about this, they've been very accommodating and, do you have any concerns with that kind of approach?
No, I, we're all for, you know, I mean, I think one thing about us that Dave's recognizing working with him for 10-plus years, we want, we want a nice community. We want, I don't, I don't want, you know, cars everywhere. I want it, you know, understanding it is high density. We want to make it as comfortable and physically, or, you know, as appealing as possible. I will, it becomes a challenge, you know, we, can we go back and add some more? Sure, I think we could probably redesign a few things, but it, it does, you know, it is a challenge once you get to a certain point, and we're, we're close to that. But I think we can go back and exhaust all the options and see what we can do.
Yeah, I can see it'd be difficult, but if in the long run, you know you're making it better for the people that are going to live there, because this is obviously going to be, be in this area for a long time. It's worth the extra effort or whatever to get a few, a few more if possible.
Sure.
And you're saying the, the private drive in between the townhomes, that's 31 now? Or was that higher? Drive is 31?
Mike, do you, the, the private drive that we're, so the new city standard, you just want to, because-
I can, Mike, do you want me to pinch hit real quick? So I, I think what Jesse said earlier is correct. Basically 25 feet of asphalt. But then unlike with his previous phases, there's additional space beyond that between the driveway and the structures. It's not a lot. It's three feet. One of the things that-
Right here, you're talking about this?
Correct, that.
Right.
Yeah, so when we say driveway, we're not talking about the distance that's behind a garage before you get to that communal drive that provides access to the units. There basically would just be a three-foot apron from what runs east and west, that driveway to the garage door. The intent of that, that space is, for example, to provide room for garbage cans, to make it easier to navigate in and out of garages, and to do some different things like that. But also, we're very sensitive because of a project that's on State Road 51, where in some cases there's six feet of room from the garage to the driveway. And we found that that's enough room for people to feel comfortable parking there. And it's not always a perfect parallel park, so it does obstruct other people's ability to navigate those driveways. So we wanted, we wanted to discourage that, but yet provide a little bit more room.
Three feet.
This was debated and reviewed long enough that some of us got really tired of talking about it, and this is where we landed.
But if we were to put, if you were to add parking at the end of those, if they're 31 feet, if you were to park at the end of those, you'd probably get three stalls per show those parking.
Can you go back to the, do you have a, a close-up on phase seven?
Like right here?
Yeah. So I don't, I don't believe we have enough room-
Depth-wise?
Here at the end to get, you know, to do anything there.
Is that your, is that your garage?
Yeah, the garage is on the-
So you'd have space from the edge of the garage to the edge of property, right?
Yeah, but remember, if you're pulling out of that garage, you got to back in, so there can't be anything in the way if you want to safely get out. I, I think with the recommendation, I think we can sit down, I can sit down with the engineer and we can look, push and pull and see where we can get, you know, if it's two or three or four, you know, we'll try and maximize it. It's, it's not a cost issue for us on the expense of adding parking.
It's a space.
Yeah.
It's not ruining the amenities.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that'd be great. Any additional questions?
One question I have, what's in the front towards Canyon? What was the feature?
Oh, there's a pickleball court.
Great. Put three or four more in there.
Yeah. If you'd like to contribute to the HRA, you could probably. No, we, I would like to put more than one in. It's a fun activity, so.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so we will again move into public hearing. One thing I forgot to mention before, with, with comments from the public, try and not repeat anything that's already been shared. Try and keep it to, you know, around three minutes. And usually what we do is we take notes of the comments that are shared. We wait until public hearing is closed, and then we address the, the questions or comments that you bring up. So with that, we'll move into public hearing. So anyone that has any questions or comments concerning this, this agenda item, feel free to approach the mic and state your name and how about her? Easy enough. Seeing none, we'll move out of public, public hearing. Do the commissioners have any additional comments or thoughts on this one?
I'll make one comment, and that is, is that the condominium or the townhomes that are east of here, there are a lot of those residents who park out on Canyon Road. And since then, these have been better. They don't have as much, I don't know whether it's, I don't know what the conditions are that have lessened the need for offside parking. But there doesn't seem to be hardly any problems with the parking in the areas where they have already developed. And so I would like to continue that so that, you know, we, we, you know, keep that like it is now. So I appreciate that the applicant is willing to work at that and to find a few more places. One of the things that I have heard about some of the other places like this is that it's hard for people to come in and visit, you know? There might be enough parking for the residents, but if you need to go in and visit a family member or there's some other reason that you're visiting, sometimes you walk a block or more just to get to the person who you're trying to visit. And in this case, that would be a scenario where I would worry somewhat that we don't have parking spots, you know, consistently through the area. So, but I'm glad that you're willing to work with that and continue to improve that.
Anyone else?
More parking if it's not an expense to the applicant in this case, and we can add some more parking. They'll be used, they'll be appreciated. I think it's a good continuation of the project that's already going up there.
And one potential solution would be to add a condition that the applicant and staff work in good faith to devise ways to come up with additional parking at staff's discretion as far as what good faith is. But otherwise, I, I would approve it. 24 units, two garages per unit. There's a six additional spaces as there is now. Plenty, a lot of on-street parking, which I like in a non-through way. So I, if they can come up with more parking, that'd be awesome. And I think we, that would be my suggestion as far as a condition to, to add to it, that the parties work in good faith with staff's discretion as far as the final result. faith with staff's discretion as far as the final result.
I like that. You want to make a motion? Sounds pretty good.
I'll give it a go.
All right. First time.
All right. I, I make a motion that we recommend the ridge at Spanish Fork amended, phases six and seven, zone change and preliminary, preliminary plat approval. And that we do so with the, with applicants' need to satisfy each of the conditions as given by staff, adding an additional condition that applicant and staff work together in good faith to determine any additional parking that could be achieved on-site, and the end result being in staff's discretion.
Beautiful. Sounds great. We've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second, Matt.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. I forgot to mention, and I apologize for this, we've, we've got a new planning commissioner with us tonight, I should have stated this at the beginning.
Don't apologize, I like flying under the radar.
Want to welcome Joseph Ernest to the planning commission.
Thank you.
I'm glad to have him. Brad Tanner served his full six years, and we're going to miss Brad. He was a, a great planning commissioner and has done a lot for the city, so wanted to make everyone aware, excuse me, make everyone aware of those changes, so... All right, next public hearing item is the Gage Canyon proposal.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like with the last proposal, this has two parts, a proposed zone change and a proposed preliminary plat for master plan development. The proposed zone change in this case is a little bit unique in that half of the property is currently zoned, R1-9. So the proposal would only involve changing the zoning on the remaining part from rural residential to R1-9. Subject property is what we're seeing right there, the corner of Canyon Road and fourteen-hundred East. The next item on the agenda is right next to it. I think it's just serendipitous that the timing worked out that they're both on an agenda at the same time. To speak just really briefly to the proposed zone change, that's consistent with the general plan, it's consistent with the surrounding zoning, I don't think there's really much other to consider. In fact, rather than just the R1-9 zone, relative to the proposed preliminary plat, staff saw a handful of different conceptual designs for the proposed project. We focused on intersection location and making a connection to the development that's also proposed to the south.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I can't hear what you're saying.
Okay. Any help there? Just go louder. Is that it? How about?
This is, no, no, the mic is fine.
Is this any, no different?
Mm-mm.
That mic is fine.
Okay. Some much, need to get louder, huh? Yeah, I do need to get louder.
It's on now, that's good.
Okay. Testing? Better? Okay. Haven't said much, I'll start over. Staff's comfortable with the R1-9 zone, it's what surrounds the property, half of the property is currently zoned that way, I think that's a really easy thing to, to get a handle on, and we haven't spent a lot of time considering other options necessarily. The proposed preliminary plat, I just mentioned that we have seen a handful of different conceptual designs for the development, none of those were significantly different than what's proposed tonight. Really, the only questions had to do with where the access should be provided on fourteen-hundred East, and how a connection should be made to the project to the south. The proposal that's before you tonight is what we as staff were the most comfortable with. The proposed preliminary plat, it is a master planned development, it's a little bit different than maybe a traditional subdivision. Incidentally, there have been very few traditional subdivisions that have been proposed in recent years. Typically, you review proposals for master plan developments, don't mean to use, you know, any kind of, kind of jargon to describe things, so to put that in different terms, our zoning ordinance allows applicants to propose to do projects where there isn't, for example, a minimum lot size, but rather a maximum density or a maximum number of homes that a developer can include in a project. Frankly, because it's typically more advantageous for developers to use that maximum density scenario, that's why, generally, those are the types of projects that end up working their way to your agendas. In this case, that's what the applicant's done, and the proposal does meet the city's requirements for master plan developments in the R1-9 zone. And again, just to be clear, the proposal is for R1-9 development. The idea of having some lots that are smaller than nine thousand square feet, again, that goes back to that provision that we have in the ordinance that indeed allows for that as long as, in essence, there's an overall average lot size that hits a certain mark that is prescribed in, in the zoning code. Also, I'd mentioned that the approval of master plan developments, that is left up to the city council. So like on the last item, where you made a recommendation on that proposal, that was because, that was a master plan development. If we were talking about a traditional subdivision, you as the commission are the land use authority, and you would approve or deny and not be making a recommendation, but because this is a, is a master plan development, we ask you tonight to make a recommendation, and ultimately, the city council has discretion as to whether or not to approve a project as a master plan development, or to require changes, or that, that sort of a thing, so that certainly is within your purview to make recommendations on and for them ultimately to make a decision on. I think those are the nuts and bolts of the proposal, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you know what the average lot size is then for this development?
I don't know, it's going to be, I assume, in the vicinity of nine thousand square feet on this one, I think, on the, the next item on the agenda, it's a little bit larger than that. I think the applicant's engineer is here, I don't know if he could maybe help with some quick math or something, he might already have that in his hip pocket, that number. We simply look at the number of units per acre that they have, and, and that's the gauge that we use.
So the reason this one is, so the next one, I noticed in the wording says master planned development, but this one does not, so they both will be master planned development?
Simply an omission on our part with the staff report, yeah, they both are the same in terms of what's proposed.
And can you talk about in the conditions, the setback number three?
Yeah, thank you. It's been customary as well, really for both side and rear setbacks. And I'm going to just take a quick step back, so this hopefully makes sense to everybody. The idea of having a project approved is something other than just a cookie cutter subdivision where every lot is identical in terms of its, its lot width, depth, and overall size, is that, among other things, developers can get a little bit more creative, maybe you can fit different styles of homes in a, in an individual neighborhood, or do things that are a little bit different than what we sometimes refer to as just urban sprawl. Things don't always work out that way, right? I mean, ultimately, it's up to the developer to execute and to make a better neighborhood as a master plan development, but that's the philosophy behind it. Giving a developer and giving builders some flexibility in terms of how much space they have to have from a house to a neighboring property line, whether it's on the side or in the rear, in terms of how close a home is to a property line on the rear, those are things that over the past several years, pretty readily, the city has approved. Right now, in the R1-9 zone, property owners are required to have ten feet of space on each side of their home, from the home to the property line, and twenty-five feet of space to make the backyard, from the back of the home to the rear property line. That's in traditional subdivisions. The city council has the ability to grant deviations from those and other specific zoning provisions as part of a master plan development approval. And in this case, that is proposed, that on one side of a home, potentially, a builder could construct something closer than ten feet to the property line, down to as little as five feet. At least as this is written, that would be with the provision that still there's at least fifteen feet from that home to the home next door. So for example, if a neighbor built a home five feet from the property line before, let's say I were to build there, then I'd have to have ten feet on my side per how this is written right now. So that driving down the street, at least spatially, you would see fifteen feet between homes.
So how's that going to work if you've got one neighbor on one side that did five feet to your property line, the lot in between didn't get developed, and the other neighbor on the other side did five feet towards your property line?
If you do five on one side, you have to do ten on the other, is the rule. Still, that could happen, if you think about how things could be laid out, and that simply would be, literally, and it, that has come up only a few times over the years, and sometimes that means that somebody has to modify their floor plan or choose a different one or something like that.
So they still would be required then to have that fifteen feet, no matter what?
At least as this is written, that's the case, and this is how a deviation to that standard has been granted in the past. Not that it needs to continue to be that way, but, but this, this is consistent with, with what the practice has been on a lot of projects. And just to talk about why I think builders like to have that flexibility, and at least one of the reasons that we as staff see some value in it, from my perspective, lot width and the space that somebody has across the lot to place a home within, really dictates probably more than anything the type of home that gets built. So for example, somebody's ability to have a third car garage and those sorts of things, even more so than overall lot size, although of course, lot width and lot size, there's, there's a strong correlation between the two, but lot width really does dictate the space that somebody has to use to put a particular style of home on, and simply giving somebody five more feet to work with oftentimes does make a difference. Likewise, having only a five-foot setback on one side, we haven't found necessarily that that ends up being detrimental, as long as somebody has room on the other side, you know, maybe for an RV pad or, you know, a place to put a boat or something like that. Lot depth is similar, you know, bonus room on the back, bigger kitchen, different things like that that might extend into a backyard to maybe a distance of twenty feet to the rear property line instead of twenty-five. We have viewed that as staff as really being pretty innocuous for the neighbors, you know, whether it's twenty or twenty-five, it doesn't matter that much to the neighborhood character and that sort of a thing. But we've seen some home plans that, that work if it's twenty feet, and they don't work if it's twenty-five, so we've seen no reason to, to not support that reduction in five feet on the rear setback as well. Front setback's a different story, we want, we want the, the driveway depth, we want that space in the front for lots of different reasons, but on the side and rear setbacks, like I said, it's been customary to grant that deviation. I apologize for that really long description of setbacks and, and what we've done, but that being said, you know, ultimately, that's the purview of the city council as to whether or not those deviations are granted, and that's certainly one of the things that we look for you to make a recommendation on.
This is on interior, so anywhere that are bordering the street, any corner, they still have that greater setback?
It wouldn't change the, thank you, it would not change a corner setback, for example, yeah.
But you're including rear setbacks in that?
That is part of what we discussed, and maybe I'd let the applicant speak exactly to that. It's been customary for us to grant that reduction, and we talked about that with this development. I don't see it spelled out exactly in, in the staff report that way, but I think that's on the table for consideration.
So I've got a...
Go ahead.
Got an educational question, Dave. So with setbacks in construction, what happens if a developer or a home builder, let's say it's not through a developer, just on their own, builds something that is within the setbacks, and it actually goes up and gets built, nobody catches it? What, what's the process there that the city goes through if somebody were to complain about that?
That gets resolved in different ways. That happens probably once every two or three years. The last time it happened, the plat had to be amended to move the property line. That was a relatively painless fix. Years ago, ten, maybe more like eleven or twelve years ago, it was partly my fault that somebody did that, so they were able to petition the city for a variance, and that was granted to make it legal even though they didn't meet the full setback distance. We have had a couple of cases in the last, boy, these were both within the last couple of years, so, you know, maybe it happens more frequently than I mentioned, where it was caught when footings were down, footings came out, and, you know, things got repoured. So this is something that we take seriously when we identify a problem with setbacks, and these problems happen in really, really innocent ways. You think about property corners being placed in a development situation, and how easily those get moved, and how easily somebody measures setbacks from maybe the wrong point and those kinds of things. It does happen, and typically, it, it, it becomes pretty obvious at some point in time, you know, usually, and this is the worst thing in the world to deal with, absolutely. You know, you, you just want to catch it as early as you can, but to go to somebody that's, you know, maybe at like a, a four-way inspection where seventy-five percent of the house is done, and to say, hey, red tag, you know, stop, we've got something to fix, right, you, you can appreciate how much angst that creates for everybody involved.
It's in the van. But that's an inspection point, the footing foundation inspection checks setbacks.
As best as they can, but you know, you, you think about the environment that, that you're working in, in a development where all of the earth is disturbed, there are not as solid a reference points as maybe you would, you would think that there are, literally, and people aren't surveying in, you know, the, the corners of every home that gets built or anything like that at all, so it's probably a bit of a surprise that we don't run into more problems with that.
Any other questions for staff?
Fencing question. They're showing a six-foot masonry fence along fourteen-hundred East, they're not showing one along Canyon Road. Would you, would, would ordinance require one along Canyon Road as well?
It does, and that's the only explanation that I have for why that's not specifically called out, but that, I think, is the intent, correct? Yeah.
Okay.
So, masonry wall that would match what would be constructed along fourteen-hundred East.
Doesn't need to be added as a condition, it's part of, you'll, you'll require it?
I think we're covered, we probably will ask the applicant to go ahead and note it on the plans, just...
Is there a masonry wall along the west boundary as well, where the existing homes are?
Where this is a proposed single-family development that abuts another single-family development, that's not required, in fact, we wouldn't require any type of fencing per se, that's just something that would be left up to the developer or the individual homeowners to, to build.
Why is it required on the roads?
It's a function of the type of roads that we have, our cross-sections for those roads, that is the, the way that we define how the roadways need to be built. They start on the outside edges with masonry walls. The masonry walls are part of the cross-section for lots of different reasons. A significant one is to just limit access, to make it clear that, you know, nobody can have a double frontage lot with maybe a, a driveway that, that would give them access to Canyon Road, like we have to the west of here, and I think for aesthetic purposes and, and different things like that as well. The wall ultimately is owned by the city, so I think largely for that reason, we're particular about how it gets built, how it's going to, going to age and maintenance and cost and, and those kinds of things, so...
One more. How typical is it for an applicant to ask for an R1-9 zone change, present a plat that doesn't meet the minimum lot size requirements of the R1-9, in, using the MP? doesn't meet the minimum lot size requirements of the R1-9 in, using the MPD? Is it, is the city typical, typically very flexible with that or, or not? What's staff's feeling on the fact that there's numerous lots under the 9,000 minimum lot size per R1-9 code?
It's been very customary. Over the course of probably the last decade, we made a really significant revision to the master plan development provisions of the ordinance in the 2010, maybe even 2009 kind of timeframe. Since then, I can think of two subdivisions that have been approved as traditional developments. So again, certainly it's advantageous for developers. They probably, you know, on projects of this size, conceivably could end up with, you know, maybe one or two additional lots by taking advantage of that. And, you know, I think with very, very few exceptions, some of the lots indeed end up being smaller than that minimum lot size. Most of the projects that we've approved for single-family homes over the last few years have been in the R1-12 zone where it's a 12,000 square foot minimum lot size. So, you know, in that regard, it's been different. We've been looking at probably 10 and 11,000 square foot lots instead of what you're seeing here, but the, the approach and the concept and the rules are the same.
Seems like more often than not, we're getting master plan development requests with
Almost entirely, I would say, yeah.
Like the one up above, up near the reservoir was, for the same reason.
Yeah.
I, I look in my subdivision, even my own home is just under the R1-12.
Yeah.
And so, seems to happen a lot. So I guess my follow-up question to that would be, how much lower, below the designated zoning, would it be all right for a master plan development?
I think that's entirely within your role to make a recommendation on and ultimately for the city council to decide. I might be wrong about this, but I think at one point in time, we had a minimum lot size that was tied to the master plan development code and I might be confusing that with our infill development provisions. But ultimately, some changes were made to do away with that, just with the idea at least, that developers have that, that maximum number of homes that they can fit into a project. And generally speaking, they want lots to be as large as they can, you know, they don't want, you know, some lots in a neighborhood to be two or three times the size of some others. They're looking typically for some continuity of lot size and, and that sort of a thing. Because I think that's advantageous certainly for them as they try to sell a development. So I don't think we've necessarily felt the need to have a minimum, but that's something that, that certainly is on the table. I would say that if the commission feels like that's the case, that would be certainly a good topic for a discussion relative to, to a change to the ordinance.
So I'm looking at the plans. Mike, maybe you can go to the one that actually shows the lot sizes. I'm looking up in the top right corner, kind of at the data and the notes, and the notes, one of the notes one says zone is R1-8. I'm just wondering if that's just not correct on these plans or why it says R1-8 on the plans, but we're trying to rezone for an R1-9. How does that work?
The proposal is for R1-9 zone and a master plan development in the R1-9 zone. That's just a typo.
Typically, that type of typo would occur if the civil engineer was planning a plat based off of R1-8. So that, that's a little bit concerning to me, but for what it's worth.
The number of lots, I, I can certify very clearly that this proposal would not work in the R1-8 zone with the number of homes that they have.
Even with the MPD?
Even with the MPD.
Okay, that's important to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the applicants here, I'll let them, you know, speak to that. We're working with a very reputable engineering firm on both of these two projects. They do a lot of work in the community. I'm not one to, to vouch for people very often, but mistakes like that do happen and that's what we're talking about, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions before we have the applicant come up? Thanks, Dave.
I thought you said it was reputable.
Hey, I remember high school cooking, Todd. I got, I don't wanna bring stuff up, so let's move on. Hey, I, so, I usually, I'm representing the client tonight. I'm hopefully the reputable engineering firm as well. I apologize for the typos, but that's, that's a good catch. R1-9 is our tab completely, so. I think the applicant wanted to show some of the product he's putting on and he's tried to, to increase the exteriors of these a little bit because we're putting, these are smaller lots, just like you're pointing out. One thing that your ordinance, we've done several of these under the master plan ordinance and what it allows us to do is work with some odd shapes sometimes, so, which makes sense up in the top left corner, you can see those big lots because we kinda have a tight corner right there that we're working with and a power easement, so. Mike, did we have the elevations?
So Scott, with that easement, none of your rear setbacks are going to be along the existing homes, none of the rear setbacks are going to be able to be adjusted like Dave was?
Correct. Yeah. The, the power easement will
Supercede that.
Exactly, yeah. So there's just a couple of things to point out. These aren't huge homes, you can see, but they're, they've got a couple of features that they've, they really like with their communities. They, they put a front-loaded porch, they try to encourage people to come out and be out on their front porches, which helps with the neighborhood. And then on their exterior finishes, they don't have any stucco or vinyl siding. All of the exterior will be either stone, brick, or hardy board, which makes a higher end product and it makes a nice look, so. Scroll through them, there's some, one floor, single floor and two-story
What are the, is it square foot? I can't read that at the bottom.
That one right there's 1,100, it's 16 on the main, 1,100 upstairs.
Okay.
And that's pretty typical. They go from, I think, 1350, 1,400 up to about 17 on the main. I feel like Dave represented everything else. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you know just offhand what the average, what the average lot size is then on these?
I do now. 8,653 square feet.
You mentioned that some of the, that there will be stone or brick on the front of many of them or some of them, what percentage? Or will all of them have stone or brick on the front?
All of them will have some and then everything else will be hardy that isn't stone or brick on them.
But all will have some stone or brick on the front?
Correct.
Okay.
Will these be pre-sold or will they just be building them out and then selling? Will they, they be pre-selling this and then building the houses for individuals or this?
Yes. They, they'll build a model and then they'll pre-sell. Their sales have outpaced their construction lately.
How do the size of these lots compare to the homes on the west and on the east of these?
The homes on the west were built back with the conventional subdivision, so they're 9,000. So on average, you would be another 300 square feet on them. So on a 100-foot lot, you would be about three feet wider on average. Across the street, I don't know what that was, is it a PUD Maggie's Place?
They're, they're smaller.
And those are smaller, but I think that was done under a PUD or, I don't know what it was done, I don't wanna say, I wasn't involved.
Something that doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, they're, right. I looked at those, there's some lots in that one that are 4,000 something square feet and they're
It's also R1-8. It's a higher density.
So the general plan for all of that area is the same, but that, that piece, for whatever reason, is a little higher density.
I'll come up here in a second. I, I guess you're right.
So a little bigger on the west, a little smaller, tighter on the east.
There you go. There's no good highlighting that, Mike.
Zoom it out. 9,000, that lot's 89 something, so.
Click the one at the very bottom of the cul-de-sac, right in the middle.
9,223.
Click the one, two to the right of that one.
4,300.
So there won't be any of that small in this development.
No.
Any other additional questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, this is another public hearing, so same rules apply as what was described before. Three minutes or so. So this time, we'll move into public hearing, just state your name again and where, where you live.
Thank you, Mihael Charneski. I'll be up here for a couple three-minute increments, hopefully. This is more of a question for the city. Has there been a impact study done on the traffic going southeast and south and, I guess, south and west out of the, out of there to all the schools and to the churches and so forth? I mean, it's easy to see how you get to the road, to Canyon Road, but all the other directions and cutting through the existing neighborhoods and without the choke points and, and so forth?
No.
Can there be? And can that be addressed by adding choke points at existing intersections to slow traffic down or?
So with this being a zone change, the commission, you have very, very broad latitude relative to what recommendation you make. Likewise, the council has the same considerable latitude to, to require whatever they'd care to require to date. Staff hasn't seen value in having the project studied additionally in terms of traffic impact or that type of a thing. And, you know, I'll let Mr. Clark maybe add to that if he has anything. That's, that's probably more of his realm of expertise than mine.
Cause I know, you know
Oh, it's, sorry. Sorry, it's on, it is on now. Okay.
Sorry, he's looking at me.
Sorry.
Well, to get, you know, to get to the junior high, I know, you know, there's now a new light there at the, on Canyon Road, but if I were living there, I wouldn't wanna make two left turns to get to the junior high at drop-off time. I'd be cutting across through there and, and now we've got this development plus the one to the south coming up through it. So that's gonna be a big impact in the mornings and in the afternoons and throughout. So I would highly encourage that impact to be addressed with not necessarily just this, these developments, but also other developments going forward. You know, this is more than just a, you know, it affects everybody around it in, in all directions, not just arterial to get to the, to get out of town.
My name is Frank Judd and I live on 1150 South, which is actually backs up on the next project, the Heritage Farms, but both of these are of interest to me. First of all, I need to ask you to be patient with my ignorance. Could you tell me in just brief terms, what's the difference between an RR and an R1-9? I, I don't even understand which, what, what that means.
So an RR zone is, is rural residential. We usually use the RR when we annex property into the city and we don't quite know, nobody's approached us with a development plan. It's what we call kind of a holding zone. And so it's, it's, RR is usually 40, if I got that right, is it 40 units or 40, one unit to 40 acres?
It's one per acre.
One per acre.
Yeah.
And so it's a larger density, but typically it gets zoned RR knowing that in the future it will be changed to something different, R1-9, R12, R15, R3, whatever. But RR is usually just our holding zone.
And used for farming? I guess so. So it's, it's a, it's a matter of the density of homes. What does, as you have been talking about, the size of the property, is there something about the difference between these two zoning codes that addresses the height of the building that will be put on these properties?
Dave, do you know if each zone has, well, they do, because I know R3 is a little different. Do you want the, the building height this where
Pretty much across the board for zoning districts that are intended to have single-family homes and even most of them that would allow for some kind of multifamily home style, it's 35 feet. So that's uniform regardless of the zoning designation.
So whether it's a higher density zone or a single-family lower density, you're saying 35 feet roof?
35, 35 feet. And I can, excuse my ignorance, is that a one-story or is that a two-story or a three-story home?
Two-story is the same, whatever the roof, it's the same whether it's a single or a, or a double. The, the height maximum is 35 feet no matter what you're building.
So
Yeah, you could get two-story.
So you can build a three-story home in that, in that
It wouldn't work.
Framework?
You wouldn't be able to. I, I mean, it'd be pretty tight, nine-foot ceilings with the foot in between the floors and wood.
Your roof.
And your roof.
Pitch of the roof, it doesn't, doesn't work. More likely what you would see is a two-story home with a, with a higher pitch to get to the 35. If it was down, you'd just see that, that pitch, that roof change or a single family or a single-story home. Probably not three stories than that.
So one of the reasons I'm asking is because a lot of the residents, including me, we like where we are because we have a nice view of the mountains. If we, if I had a three-story house built in back of my house, I would have no view whatsoever. So I'm wondering if, if, is there any consideration, is there any concern on the part of the planning commission in, in addressing how we, how we address the concerns of the peripheral families who have at the moment a very nice view and possibly if, if, if what you're saying is true about the R1-9 zoning, that could be completely destroyed by the houses that are built?
That's, that's a possibility with, with that. One thing that we've
That wouldn't be a happy situation for a lot of us.
One thing, one thing that we've always learned is when you purchase your property, you don't necessarily buy the view. That's not written into your contract anywhere. And if you wanna preserve the view or anything else that you've got, you have to buy the land next to you because you can't determine what's gonna be built there, you know, later on. That happens all the time with development.
So, so the way the, the way the things are set up right now, any of the homes, all of the homes in, in these two sections could be, could, they could all be 35 feet?
It could be.
It could be a home exactly like your own, put right behind you and, and it would probably be about 35 feet.
That won't always block your view.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Basically, if it were built like my home, it wouldn't block my view. But what you're saying, I think, is there, there's nothing that you can do to preserve the, the rest of the property's advantages that we have with our home.
The ZINAC does. The ZINAC does that.
But we, right, and we saw, you saw the renderings of what they're proposing to put there. I wouldn't call any of them exceptionally tall homes.
Yes, I saw the renderings and you're, and you're right. I wouldn't be too concerned about that, but that's not what this zone allows them to do. There's no, I don't hear any concern on anybody's part as to a buyer coming to the There's no, I don't hear any concern on anybody's part as to a buyer coming to the property, builders, and saying, "Look, I don't want that plan, I want this plan."
If it fits within the cities, would they allow people to put there? Yeah, that could be put there.
So can we, can we, and I've just heard also that you are in the process of amending many of these proposals to include additional requirements. Is that a possibility for these two properties, for these, for Gage and Heritage?
I guess I'm not sure what the additional requirement is that you're asking for.
Well, I'm not sure either. I'm pretty ignorant about these things, but I am concerned about what might be the height, the outline of the home that is in, that will be in back of many of our properties.
Thirty-five feet, which is, which is what's in the city ordinance. And honestly, I think it was already mentioned, no matter what the size of the home is, you could have a neighbor that lines your fence with shade trees, and they have every legal right to do that as well.
And that would be more obstructive.
That would be absolutely more obstructive than the home would be. Yeah, unfortunately, with development comes change. It's hard when you've lived in a certain place for a long time. I lived growing up on a dead-end street for twenty-plus years in my parents' home and came back from a two-year visit abroad, and there was development and everything was different. That's, that's what happens with development a lot of times, unfortunately. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Larry Bates, and I live in Spanish Fork. Irregardless of the setbacks and side distances and five feet and what's customary, we're talking about thirty-six homes, right? The puzzle, that's, there's thirty-six puzzle pieces regardless of what the developer does with lot size and setbacks and edge distances and all that, it's thirty-six.
So what's proposed?
Okay. Second to that, I did some quick math when you flashed it up there on the screen, and where we stated the average lot size was eighty-six hundred feet, that's because that all those seven thousand square foot lot sizes are the beneficiary of the thirteen thousand foot lot sizes in the corners, right?
Yes.
So there's a whole bunch of seven thousand square foot lot sizes in an R19. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jamie Branch, and I will address this property and then the one south of it as well, because I also live on the street just below on the corner. I have a couple of questions or concerns. First, and I don't know if the question comes to you or if the builders are here, are these developments going to allow people to build their own homes in these developments, or are they going to be built by a designated builder? Do you guys know that?
It'll be built by the builder. I've homes, we build all of them in the north of the canyon. I'm not speaking for heritage.
Okay. And then, as far as parking goes for this development, will they have adequate parking then for just like a two-car family or, because we've had, we have issues with ivory homes across the street with the homes that face fourteen hundred. There's parking, and particularly with a couple homes, that happen to be right by my home, and they have a clear vision problem when you pull out on fourteen hundred, and you can't see around the cars when they're parked on the sides of the street. So I didn't know if that is supposed to be allowed and if that will happen with these new developments coming in. If so, then it's going to cause more problems because you already can't see coming out of eleven fifty south when they have cars parked on both sides of the road. So I am wondering, because clearly ivory homes doesn't have enough parking for the houses there because they're parking out on the road.
Good question.
The other question I have is, so if they're putting a, like a, I can't remember which called, the rock wall that's going, going to go down fourteen hundred, so they didn't, is that, they don't have that along all the way down fourteen hundred. It'll just, I assume, stop at the end of these two properties? But is there a reason why it doesn't, if it's coming from the city, doesn't continue on down the rest of the road to make it consistent with the existing developments there? And then, also a question about the impact on the traffic flow as well on fourteen hundred, because it's already a pretty busy street that a lot of cars don't follow the speed limit on, and I live right on the corner, so I am impacted by all of the traffic on that road. Wondered if speed bumps could maybe be put in on that street? Because in the evenings and early mornings when kids are walking to and from school, cars are racing down that road all the time, very, very fast. So those are my concerns.
I'm Donna Hansen, I live in Spanish Fork, next to the field. I feel better about seeing the homes that are going in there, but I am just concerned about so many homes being under nine thousand square feet. In my neighborhood, there's plenty of cars that park on the street, and with smaller lots, I feel like there's just going to be even more cars parking on the street and making it hard for people to see, kind of like Jamie was talking about. I just wish that we could see more lots that were closer to the nine thousand square feet and not, at least not very many in the seven thousand range. If we could just get closer to the R19, that would be nice, and that would match the neighborhood that it's budding right up against. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Troy Thomas, I live here in Spanish Fork. I have a home just on the west of this development. My concern, too, is the width of the roads and the amount of parking that is available. I, I've seen the, the width of the roads shrinking in the, in the city and not enough parking off-road in those developments, and so it's hard to even get one car down through some of these subdivisions because everyone's parking on the road because there's no space on their lots to park. So that's my concern is, is what are we doing to address those kind of issues? Because to me, they become a safety issue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Row Hakes, I'm just curious, the size of the roads that are in there, how does that compare to like twelve forty east? I mean, I'm looking at this map and it's showing sixty feet, and I'm not exactly sure what all of that means, and is that similar to twelve forty east or how, what's the similarities? Or can you answer that as me?
Yep, we will. We've got an expert on that.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will move out of public hearing, and I think we've all taken down some pretty good notes, try and address these as best we can. Maybe we can start, Mike, with, with traffic and road questions. I don't know if you've got it up yet, but the width differences between these two developments and neighboring developments.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll try and address them all if I forget one of the answers. Please go ahead and ask me at the end. So twelve forty, we measure when you say sixty feet or ninety feet, we call that our right-of-way, so that's not the road, that's the sidewalk, the planter strip, all that put together. So the right-of-way here is, no, I mean, I'm on Google Earth, but sixty-six feet. So the ones in here would be sixty feet, but the road width would be actually a lot smaller. So the typical cross-section of a road, sorry, I have the wrong one pulled up, I have the fourteen hundred east one. So you see your typical one here is a combination, we call it, with the sidewalk and curve, and then you have your asphalt, and then it's mirrored on the other side. The newer ones, if you've been to newer kind of neighborhood, the asphalt's twenty-nine feet, then you have your curb and gutter, so overall you're thirty-four feet to the back of the curve, and that's kind of your driving area there. And then an eight-foot planter, that's where some storm infrastructure and some power and other things go, streetlights, and then your sidewalks on the back. So that's kind of the comparison between the two of them.
What's, what's the width of the, between the sidewalks and the street?
This one? Eight feet.
Eight feet, okay.
Which is probably the biggest difference between the surrounding neighborhoods. I'm just looking to the south. For probably twenty years, the right-of-way width, like Mike just described, now it's sixty feet. It used to be fifty-six feet, and so four additional feet have been required. Actually, we have tightened up the asphalt width by like a foot, I think, and that additional space has been placed in the park strip, so that's a little bit wider than it used to be. That's, that's really the difference between what we have today and used to have.
So streets are about the same, a little bit smaller now than, than the neighborhood on the west, but you've got larger park strips?
Yeah, streets will be several feet skinnier, for sure. So if you go across tonight when you go home, drive through the Eagle Cove, the roads will look very similar to that.
Is this development that's going in going to have the narrowing in and out and on the, on the corners, you know, how, how the streets come together? You know, if it's going to do that here?
I have too many windows open, just a second.
You can see it barely in the top.
There we go. So this one in particular would not, just how the streets line up and the length of street, we didn't feel like it was necessary to narrow a street to slow down traffic for sixty feet or whatnot, so this one's unique that there's not really a lot of that specific narrowing that you would see in the Eagle Cove subdivision. Next question you had was on fourteen hundred, so let me pull up that, what that street will look like. Nope, it's not that one. So right now, it's only half-built or two-thirds built, I guess you could say. So this subdivision would widen it, they'd give land to widen the road as well as mirror basically what you see down on Eagle Cove. So Eagle Cove, you have a twelve-foot planter, so it's a lot bigger than the eight-foot, and so that'll be the same thing on the other side. So a much higher capacity road than the roads that are on the interior. It will have a wall, and the parking question you asked, the reason that this is the way it is, we won't repeat it, it didn't work. So the driveways that back onto a collector road, they still have a three-foot wall, so you can still have some sight, but the idea of backing onto collector roads is not one we're repeating. So this wall will be along the whole western boundary to this corner here. So no access, it'll just be access, it'll be the roads individually to the subdivision.
We want to talk...
What's that? The park strip is owned and maintained by the city.
We want to talk about the question about the wall, why it's not extended at this time.
So extend it through to these houses here?
Yeah.
Cost? I don't know, Dave, unless you have a better answer?
Well, to be clear, the city will own the wall. The city will not pay for it to be built, so that's something we require the developers to build, so among other things legally, we can only require them to build it, you know, as part of their project on their site, if you will. Once they're done, it gets dedicated as part of the right-of-way to the city, and then we own it. So that's, I think that's the biggest reason.
We, we're out of public hearing. If it's not answered by the time we're done, then I'll allow you to ask it.
Speed, I think that's the other one, on fourteen hundred, and as well as pass-through traffic, cut-through traffic, we call it. So if someone wants to go to the junior high, they have to weigh out, you know, am I going to travel through this area or am I going to go up to the light and go down here and back through? I'm not sure what they're going to pick. Unless I lived there, it'd be hard for me to know what they'd pick. But both fourteen hundred and Canyon Road are, will be built to size through 2050. So we run models, we know those roads will model well through a 2050 build. So as far as adding more houses now, we've already contemplated that. We haven't done a micro-study on it, but overall, the roads can carry several times what the roads will carry in 2050. As far as cut-through, the best way to do it is not to make the cut-through worse, it's to make the road you want them to be on better. And so adding the signal, widening the road when the developer develops, the road will be widened decently, they'll have walls. It'll be a lot, much better thoroughfare than cutting through neighborhoods. If it is a problem, we can address that, and we are addressing it in other neighborhoods by calming traffic down. If you've driven up to the reservoir in the last month and a half, you might have seen some orange cones, that's a test one. There's also one on Fourth East we're testing as well, the Costco Highway, so if you've driven on that road. So we're looking at that, but we're, overall traffic, we're not, we're not concerned with this development.
So fourteen hundred, you say you would rather not try and reduce speed because it's a collector, you'd rather people be able to go at a good speed on that road rather than reduce speed there because then they'd be more likely to cut through neighborhoods?
Right.
Did I hear that right?
If the freeway was fifteen miles an hour, I don't think people would drive on it. They'd cut it, cut through front of roads or other things.
I think another thing that was brought up was parking and cars and blocking line of sight. Does anybody, would it be possible for people to indicate or point out those locations and then have it red, red stripped or anything like that?
Yes.
And that's done routinely, particularly, we call them site triangles at intersections, even sometimes driveways, different things like that. That's what gets red-curbed and signed as no parking for the very reason that was brought up, just to keep it safe.
So that's something that could be addressed with any concerns that they have with line of sight, and they would just call the city, approach the city and say, "Hey, there's this location that always gets blocked and we're concerned about it," and then the city could go out and look at it, or what typically happens?
Yeah, they can contact our office, we can go look at it. Most of the time, it's not something that moves that's the problem, a car that's parked there, if it's routinely parked right on the corner, we can go talk to them. Most of the time, it's trees, a trailer that's just left on the corner, some of those things that we've addressed in the past.
Side triangles specifically referred to like permanent structures, like your landscaping or a fence, not a temporarily parked car.
The other good part is because there's no driveways on this west side, will be allowed, there won't be any, I mean, there could be a parked car, but unless they're walking across the street to a neighbor, no one's going to park on the west side to get into this subdivision. Even if they did, you have an eight-foot shoulder, pretty wide-open area to park versus in a residential, it's a little more narrow. So there's room for people to park on this road.
Okay.
But I don't see it happening on the west side, so I think the problem will be a little lessened there.
Thank you, Mike. Did we address all the traffic and parking questions? Anybody have one that we missed?
Mr. Chair, just in terms of the number of parking spaces that are required for master-plan developments that have single-family homes, we require a two-car garage with each home and two additional spaces beyond that. So of course, oftentimes, people do other things with the garages that, that, you know, makes that hard to use for parking, but that's probably the most robust amount of parking that we require of any kind of, kind of home style in the city.
These will all have driveways long enough to put two vehicles on?
The minimum driveway depth, I think, is twenty-five feet. And if I can just correct, I misspoke earlier, the rural residential zone has a five-acre minimum lot size, not one, so, sorry about that.
We also had brought up lot sizes, concerned with the lot sizes, that they should be
Closer to nine.
Closer to the nine.
So, yeah, my, my question was...
I drew this up just while I was sitting here, this is going to be helpful.
Yeah, it is.
I make it a little bigger.
Is that all thirty-six? Yep.
Yeah, my fingers are tired.
So my thought on this, and you can correct me or help me understand why we don't do it this way, right now with master-plan development, we take the average... Right now, with master plan development, we take the average of all of the lots, right? And we, no? What do we usually do?
So, Mike, maybe if you could go to Title 15, it might help, might take too long to get there. But there's a chart in our zoning code, and with each individual zoning district, there's a maximum density number. And that's for master plan development. So rather than focusing on an average lot size, if a project, when you take the number of homes and divide it by the acres, has a number that's equal to or less than that maximum, then it's at least eligible to be approved.
Okay.
In the R19 zone, it's 3.58 units per acre, and with this project, they're at 3.5. So really close to the ceiling, but under it, there are other zoning codes that I'm familiar with, where they might have a number like that. And in addition to that, have a provision that says, but the average lot size must be at least X. You know, there are all different types of ways that if you're not comfortable with what this permits, that could be changed.
Well, I would almost prefer, rather, if we were to go that route, rather than use an average, use a median. Because you take one lot that's 50% of the total development, and then all the others are teeny-tiny, you know, then your average is still gonna be close to where it is. But if you take a median, then you're looking a little more realistic as to trying to keep them the same size.
Like in this case, a lot 11 and 10 skew the average.
Exactly, exactly.
Now, I'm not advocating for one side or the other, but historically, part of the intent of the master plan development really is to try to promote that variety. At least that, by design, that's the intention. And that can be changed as well, so.
So looking at your chart, how many, did you count, Mike? How many are hitting the red line?
Nine.
Nine of the 36 are at or above 9,000 square feet? I mean, for me, that's always a concern, trying to squeeze density into a place that it wasn't intended to be. That's, comes up in every one of our development plans. So I don't know what the answer is for that. Personally, I would love to see it get closer to the red line on some of these, but that would require more than likely some, some pretty big changes on the plans. So I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are on that.
On some of the subdivision plans, we've seen that it makes sense to do it. This has a good layout with the lot sizes. I don't see any, the 11 and 10 are big, but if you shrink them down, you're taking away their frontage. You can't really do that.
Yeah, you can't really do that.
So it doesn't, they're going to be the larger of the lots, just because they're, where they fall on the plan. If we were to try to enlarge any of these in the middle, it's gonna throw that all off.
My thoughts are, it's an R19 zone. Camouflage does something else because of the MPD, right? So the R19 has a minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet per lot. But because of the MPD, Master Plan Development Overlay, they can change that and have it be different. There are 14 lots that are under 8,000 square feet. One idea I think we should think about is whether or not we want to impose a minimum per lot, even in the R19 MPD, with the MPD overlay, maybe the minimum should be 8,000 square feet, maybe 7,500.
And if you're looking at the R18, three zones, yeah, and you do that for each zone, right?
For each MPD, we could do that.
For each MPD?
Per case by case.
Yeah. So if this were zoned R18, and the lot sizes were down below 7,000 or whatever, then...
We could do something like that, yeah.
I think, obviously, it's not gonna happen tonight, but I think that's a discussion that we should have as a commission and with staff, probably with city council. Dave, what are your thoughts on that? If we have a meeting to talk about the MPD and lot sizes? Because honestly, this comes up every single time. Every time we have a development that's master planned, this is why the residents get upset, is because the majority of the homes in that master plan are below what the zone is for.
There are a lot of issues that I think are worth spending time on and studying. Frankly, I don't think this is necessarily one of them. I'd simply say that if you think the lots that our ordinance allows right now are smaller than they should be, then let's just change the density number, honestly, and just be done with it that way. That's just my thought. I mean, I, that'd be how I would suggest that we address your concern. I frankly don't think that this is a realm that necessarily science helps with, you know, studying things and trying to figure out what necessarily is justified or right or better or worse than something else. This truly is subjective. I know how the density number was arrived at, and frankly, I think probably it does make some sense. The intent certainly, I think, is what the folks that have spoke tonight value, and I think I'm hearing that the commission values the same thing, which is that, at least that average is intended to be 9,000 square feet for a development where that's the minimum lot size. That's some simple math, you know, maybe to make an adjustment. We wouldn't want to focus on just this zone, right? I mean, it's something that comes into play with a lot of others. And I'm not trying to offer contradictory thoughts at all, but I also will say that I think we sometimes are really hypersensitive to, you know, a lot's 8,500 square feet, and it's great, and a lot that's 7,500 square feet isn't, or, you know, whatever that relationship might be. I think it takes a very, very trained eye, you know, driving down a street really to pick that out. But the line needs to be drawn someplace. And, you know, again, I'd suggest that this would be a place where you could keep it pretty simple, but we will do whatever you guys want, very happily. You know, if there's some part of it you'd like us to study, and maybe prep for a broader discussion, we're completely game like we are with everything. Those are just my thoughts.
So right now, the line that we have is the, in the Title 15, is 3.8. That's instead of so much the 9,000 square feet, it's 3.8.
So explain, explain to me again how that number, I should know this, but I don't. So you take the total number of lots, and how do you get the 3-point, total acres?
Yeah, so we're speaking in terms of homes per acre. That's what we mean when we talk about density. So in this case, the math is the proposal of 36 homes, which is then divided by the area of the project, and we measure that in acres, so that's 10.27. And the result of that equation is 3.5 homes per acre. We look at that as staff, we look at the code, we see the max, they're under the max. We move on. That's where we've been. And again, there are lots of different ways to approach the question, and...
So in the MPD, it has a, it has a very clear articulation of lots that are under 9,000 square feet, for instance, in an R19, and whether or not they can be permitted based on this average. Is that what you're telling me? For the, in the code, for the MPD, it's defined?
When you say clear description, clear what do you, I don't know that it does.
That's what I'm getting at. I'm wondering how much discretion the city has when there's an MPD assigned to a zone. That's what I, how much is discretion and how much is a code? How much isn't?
Okay. Great question. I think to understand the right answer, we need to understand what rights people have with zoning. So let's say that in this case, we're talking about property that's already zoned, R19 entirely. So a phrase that we would use is "by right," in terms of what they can do. By right, they could apply to have a development approved with all 9,000 square-foot lots, where every lot has, I believe, at least 85 feet of lot width, and at least 90 feet of lot depth. So literally, they would be, you know, that rectangular configuration or larger. And every lot would have to have at least 9,000 square feet. So when we review those projects as staff, you know, those are the things we're checking, it's simple, but we go through every lot and check those things. That's what somebody can do without the city having any ability to stop them. They design a project that meets all of those standards. It essentially gets approved administratively, and there's no discretion.
How often does that happen?
Well, like I said at the onset, I could think of two projects in the last 10-ish years where somebody's applied for a standard subdivision. Not very often, right? We've had a lot of development happen. Now, with the master plan development, this is where I'm really gonna try to answer Commissioner Earnest's question. There is language in the code that I can find and read that basically says that whether or not a project gets approved as a master plan development, is at the discretion of the city council. And they would find that in some way, you know, the project's better as a master plan development, and would approve it on that basis. And that's, that's been routine, really, over the course of the past several years. Likewise, the city council can say no. That's very clear, I think, per our zoning code.
I think it's very evident that construction standards have changed in that regard in the past 30 years. We don't have streets that just go east and west anymore. We have developments such as this one and the ones that you folks live in. There's not very many roads that go straight through. You know, you have other roads that, like this development is, that go around, and there are corners. They make the best use of the land that they can without perpetuating a lot of straight roads that are difficult to maintain and promote, high-speed traffic and stuff like that. So one of the things that people look for, that are looking to build a house, is variety. Nobody wants to go and live in a cookie-cutter neighborhood where the lots are exactly the same size and the homes are exactly the same construction. And some of the, some of the subdivisions that we have in town are like that, that there are only about five different styles of home that are built in there. And people buy those because it's what they can afford. In a subdivision similar to this one, you have lot sizes that are smaller and larger. Of course, they're gonna vary in cost according to the lot size. So if you're starting out and you don't care how big of a lot it is, you need a home that can be built and house you and your four kids, maybe you pick the smallest house, and hopefully you live in it for a while, and then you can upgrade. That's the American dream, is to upgrade and finally get that large backyard where you can have a football game. But you have to look at these things and say, okay, what are we offering here? And in this case, this developer is offering a variety of sizes of homes. And as we were looking at how large those lots were, yes, there were a few that went up that brought the lower ones up, but there were less that were way low than there are, than there were those that were way high. And so I think that you're looking for variety in the existing area on the west of this development. You have some extremely large yards that are along that western perimeter of this development. On the other hand, there's some pretty small lots in your area, too. And that was, that was intended that way. Most of them on the east side are developments that are similar to this. And they work quite well to slow down traffic and to give variety to the area that we live in and give some opportunity for some people that might not have as much money as others. The size of the lots many times don't make too much difference on how nice the home is. You can fit a really nice home on a small lot, if that's what you want to do. And you don't want a lot of, lot, on the other hand, there's other people that like a big garden and a big yard. This probably isn't the, isn't the development for that person. But it is a variety. And the things that we're talking about now, about changing, you know, the zone and making minimum lot sizes, that's certainly something that we can talk about. But as you go to a minimum lot size, and now everything is 9,000 square feet, it's really hard to develop a piece of property in that way. As you look at this, about the only way to do that is to have roads east and west, north and south. And of course, that causes a lot of problems because you can't do that. You can't have that many roads going on to 1400 East, you don't want to go through you guys' yards. So to fit a development in this piece of property, there needs to be something else done. So here we are, with this kind of a development, and you have to look at that and say, well, what's better to go there? There's always the opportunity to go with a larger development, less lots, but, you know, this is, this is an area, this is a development that kind of fits the area when you look at what's east of it, the newest homes in the area. And I'm really, I really understand this gentleman's desire to not have your view blocked. Nobody wants their view blocked. And that's one of the hardest things about development, is when you build, build and there's nothing to the, to one side of you or the other, well, you built in front of somebody else. Matter of fact, I was raised in this area, and you're right on people's farms in your area now. These people, it's farm right today, you know, they're paying on that ground. And so it's a balance that we try to, we try to preserve, but there's nothing that we can do about what people put on their own property. That's not the American way either. So that's my comment. I would prefer to see these developments tonight be decided on their own merits, not what should be, not what will be, not what was, but what we have right now. And, and let's treat this as what it is, the development is before us, and decide on its own merits.
Like that. Let's see, did we address everything that was brought up?
What about this young lady here that had a question? Was your question covered?
For the most part.
And I know you asked about speed bumps, right? Speed bumps, they've got them in one place in the city, and I think the snowplows hate them. That's one reason why we don't have them, but I'm sure there's other reasons as well. But that's, that's, I don't think that's an option the city would go down.
So my only question then is, will the city allow the people in Ivory Home to park across the road along that other, that other, that San Diego?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a public street, so there wouldn't be any law that would prevent it.
Or, or, coming out of our neighborhoods.
So if they're close to a corner, at that point, I think you could approach the city and say, you know, they're, they're too close to where we're pulling out, and the city could possibly red-curb it and keep people from parking there, but...
Certainly, the idea is that it doesn't make anything worse, and that if people were ever to park along the west side of the road there, it's not going to be a problem. The road will be expanded, I think probably to an amount that would surprise everybody in terms of additional asphalt, it's gonna be...
So the road's gonna go wide and then get narrow where it's already existing through our neighborhood?
Talking about 1400 East. The right-of-way...
I don't understand how that expansion, that significant, without cutting into the property line.
Both of these developments will be dedicating land for the expansion of 1400 East.
Right, but I'm in the neighborhood behind South of that.
Jamie looks further south more...
Oh, so you're talking about people parking there even, to the south?
Yeah.
Yeah, honestly, I can't imagine that what we're talking about tonight is gonna change that situation at all. I think you're wanting us to do something different in terms of just limiting parking, you're saying. There were, the existing curb is set on the west side, south of these properties, and that's something that absolutely we could take a look at.
But I also don't understand how the wide, how the road's gonna go, why... But I also don't understand how the road is going to get wider.
Your house, it won't get wider.
Yeah, there it's going to be the same.
It'll get a little bit wider. If you look, if you zoom in, you can see that the dirt comes out from her house about, I don't know, maybe three, four feet. So it will get a little bit wider.
There's about nine feet, I don't know where the curb is exactly in the edge of asphalt, but six to nine feet wider than it is today on the side before that curb. Yeah, down south of there, there's not plans to widen that.
Look at my list. All right, anything else, anything we missed? Any other thoughts or comments? All right, with that, does anyone want to make a motion? So, Joseph, just so you're aware with the motions that we make, Dave usually probably explained this better than I can. Dave, do you want to explain what our options are when we make motions? So we can either recommend, we can recommend approval, deny, or we can push it.
So continue would be that third option, right? With the zone change, typically, we don't suggest that you tie conditions to that because that's a legislative act. That's a little bit different than some other things that you do. If there are stipulations that you want the council to consider, we'd suggest that those be associated with a motion on the proposed preliminary plat. And I think having distinct motions probably is better than combining them with these applications. We sort of combine them for ease of conversation and that type of thing on agendas, but different motions, I think, is appropriate on each.
So tonight, we are making a recommendation, is that right, to the city council? Is this a zone change?
Yeah, that's what's before you on both the proposed zone change and preliminary plat.
In that case, I would make a motion that the Gage Canyon Zone Change to R19 be approved or be, that we recommend that it be approved by the city council along with the preliminary plat.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so this will go to the city council. Dave, do you want to let everyone know when that next meeting would be?
We've scheduled for a public hearing with the city council. Their next meeting, which I think is the 13th, maybe the 14th? There we go, thank you. So that's two weeks from last night, Tuesday, the 15th. That'll be in this room. They'll start at 6 o'clock.
That's when the decision is made, yes or no?
Yep.
That's correct.
A public portion?
Yes, it'll be just like tonight in terms of having public hearings for each of those two parts.
Yep, we give a recommendation, but they can make any additional changes or whatever it is they'd like to do. So they'll listen to you, they'll take your input as well.
I would like to also thank you guys for showing up and for speaking up. Regardless of what the recommendation or what we decide, without your input, it'd be pretty hollow all the way around. And so, we encourage everyone to come out that's got an opinion on these things and we thank you guys for coming and bringing these things up. Just like I said before, although we shouldn't make, you know, we needed to make the decision tonight based on the things that we have now, it doesn't mean that in the future, those might change. As you guys bring up many other things that we can take a look at, it could be changed in the future. I know that doesn't help you guys that are against this, but we really do value your opinion and thank you for coming.
Welcome to stick around for the south property. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is Heritage Farms.
I really don't know what more to add. This is really, really similar in terms of the proposal. You know, it's literally right next door, of course, and that sort of a thing because this was such a significant part of the discussion. Like I think I mentioned, when we first started talking about Gage Canyon, the proposed density here is a little bit less than what we were just talking about with the previous project. Like with the previous project, staff reviewed a few different concepts. We really were focused much more on the road network, making sure, for example, you can see how the intersections onto 1400 East align with the intersections coming from the neighborhood to the east, coming up with, hopefully, the most appropriate way to tie this project into the streets that stub into it from the west, having that connection to the project to the north, different things like that. And really, it's from there that the applicant took things and designed the lots in the fashion that you see here tonight. So, that all being said, the Development Review Committee has reviewed this and recommended that it be approved. And once again, the request is before you. It's really identical to what you saw in the last item.
Same applicant?
Different applicant, different developer. I assume a different builder as well, but maybe I'll let them answer that.
Any questions for staff?
I'll ask the applicant a question.
Any applicant want to speak first?
All right, is the applicant here?
I'm here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You got anything you want to share to begin with?
Yep, so I'll throw some quick stats out. So I think our average lot size minus the roads is like 9,900 square foot in this project. I think density allowed was around 3.58, we're around 3.1. So our density is quite a bit less than that. We don't have any units because the city made a smart code change. We don't have any units that go onto 1400. It's only backyards with the tilt-up concrete fence with a buffer to the yard. So I don't think they're going to have a lot of people, I mean, you're walking 600 or 700 feet around to get to the houses there, so I don't think you'll have that. But overall, we've been through several revisions of the plat with staff and with the neighbor to the north there and feel like our roads are going to work for what the city's looking for. And the layout is, we've been, Ludlow is the current owner of the property and we've worked with him on the layout a few times and stuff there, so. But outside of everything else that's been said, that's about the main difference, is we just have bigger lots on average.
Joseph, you said you had a question?
Oh, yeah, bring your own builder or builder provided homes?
This one will largely be arrive homes in here and then there'll be another builder that's picking up half a dozen lots in there, so.
Thank you.
Style of homes?
Pretty typical to what they built. So you've got ramblers and two stories. We do have restrictive covenants that we've put in place that do require a minimum of stone wainscot. They require at least three gables across the front unless they have a porch, then they can drop the two gables across the front, a few things like that. That minimum square footage, our minimum square footage is about 200 square foot more for ramblers than the city minimum requirements. I think it's 14 or 16. But that goes to the flexibility with this zone to be able to allow for a little less on-the-side setback to encourage third-car garages because then it helps with the parking issue because people have the extra, if they want to shop, they're using the third-car garage for it. So I think there is a lot of wisdom in what the code currently has. You can see by our project, there is a lot of variety in lot size from .43 to 7,800 or something. So I think a lot of time is put in, probably years ago, to come up with how this is now. But overall, that's probably what will be in there.
The restrictive covenants are going to apply to each lot and you're not carving out exceptions for the six lots that are being...
No, they're all encompassing. Yeah, they'll be recorded with the property. And they've been turned in to staff for review as well as part of our application.
Correct.
So between Lot 19 and 20, we have a power line change of direction there?
Yep. Yep, it goes there, hits the corner of Lot 44, and then heads north.
So in this case, we could have, in these bottom seven lots or eight, we could have a rear setback that is encroaching an existing house closer than what our setbacks have been before.
Yeah, so it's the exact same as the other one there as far as what it could be. But those lots, if you notice, are also about 20 feet deeper.
Right.
So it shouldn't matter. I mean, we actually should be further away in distance that way.
Can you address how that electric line is going to...
Yeah, so I can talk to it a little bit. The city has a department for that that probably is well more, a lot more versed in what it is. But essentially, the pole that there, that is currently there, is going to stay. And then we have to work our development around that pole. I don't know, is it a pole that the city even owns or is it a different jurisdiction? Strawberry, yeah, so a different jurisdiction. Yep, so we've designed our subdivision around that and around the guy wires that are in there. So it's not going to be moved, there's no disruption to the local area. So it will come out to that pole and then just head straight north. So we have a few lots that it will affect setbacks on and then the project that was just ahead of us to the north, they have several lots that will have rear yard setbacks. It'll actually give a bigger buffer to those rear yard neighbors.
Where's Lot 44 going to have your driveway?
No driveway, helipad. I'm just kidding. No, it's actually, so there's room both ways depending on which way, which way they face the house. So I don't know if you've got the one that shows. Do we have the guy wires on a survey shot? Yeah, it should show where they are on the plan there.
See the pole sitting with the curb and the guy wire that comes to it?
Yeah. So I'd say you... Yep. Yeah, so you would have substantial room to the right of 44, how we're looking at it, or if it's going to face west, you would have even more room because it's a longer setback that way, or a longer lot. And then that road, street...
That's where the pole is right now?
Correct. Yep. And then Street 3 that goes to there does have some necking down for traffic in there, but it's the only one that we're able...
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and move into public hearing for this one. So if you have any comments, questions, feel free to approach the mic. Again, state your name and try and keep your comments to around three minutes. We're now in public hearing.
Troy Thomas, I live in proximity to both of these things. I just wanted to make it clear that I'm not against the development. Again, my concerns was with the parking where we only have 30, from what I understand, we only have 34 feet width of asphalt. If you park cars on both sides, you'd only basically get one travel lane through there. So that's my concern. I'm not against the development at all. It's just more responsible development with safety concerns.
Miha Cheneski, related to this neighborhood here. To kind of follow up on John Mendenhall's comments earlier about the, trying to make these developments kind of fit the surrounding area and kind of go with as it is. You know, I'm not against development. I mean, when we bought our house, we knew something was going to go there. It's just, is it going to be a Walmart or is it going to be a, you know, church? Or is it going to be a subdivision? So really, I'm glad it's a subdivision going in, of all things. However, you know, if we're trying to build the surrounding neighborhood, and you mentioned, well, especially, I know that that discussion's closed, but you know, the plat to the, the development to the east matches the development to the east. Well, you know, that was built according to a standard that was abandoned, right? It's not used anymore, so obviously, that's a, I mean, that's kind of a, that seems to me like an invalid point. You had me all the way through until you got to that...
I'll give you a little.
What's that?
Give me a little bit.
Oh, no, I gave it all to you. You had it all until you said, you know, let's make sure, you know, it fits what's out to the east, when then earlier we discussed, that's a standard that's no longer valid. So I think it's important to, yes, judge this according to its own merits, but also, you know, well, really, to judge it on its own merits and not compare it to, well, that's just, you know, that's the way we've always done it. So, you know, just like with Troy's comments about the road width and so forth. And, you know, as long as we're, you know, personally, I'd like the thinner roads because, you know, if you allow parking off, if you encourage parking off the street, you've got your longer driveways and three-car garages, then you've actually, you know, actually done met your concerns of slowing things down. So, yeah, I'm all for it and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the transmission line standing right, staying right there. Somebody told me that I was going to get buried and I was here to tell you that it was not going to get buried. The coster weren't going to make that happen. So, yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Just one other, just concern, maybe look at, I don't know, we're narrowing the roads. People are going to move into these homes and some of them are going to use moving companies that have to drive in there. And they'll come in in a semi truck with a trailer and that may or may not be doable. I'm not sure. I'm looking at these, they look pretty tight. Just a thought. I want you to try that. Before you actually put houses there, you'll just try it, so, anyway.
I have one more question for the developer. What are the plans for the mailboxes? Is that, is that, oh, sorry.
Is that, is it all going to be like one, you know, one slot or, you know, distributed? You know, people like to congregate and park their cars on their way home, stop at the mailboxes and then continue on, so there seems to be afternoon congestion around there.
So to answer that question, I believe it is cluster boxing. I think that's what the city's requirements are. So I think we'll fall in line with the city standards with that. So there may be some congestion if people are all coming at the same time to get their mail. If someone's concerned about that, maybe they pick to hit it in the morning or afternoon or something, but it will be cluster boxes.
Who determines where they go?
Location. We haven't pinned down a location yet. I don't know if we've had any recommendation for location.
All three of you make a decision.
So I look at traffic, post office looks at routes, there are rules they have to follow and then he looks at where it best fits the community and it's usually a pretty easy discussion.
Can you address streetlights as well?
Right by the power line.
Streetlights, we are not to the streetlight. I don't know, I know that, again, with the project, it's going to be within the guidelines that the city has. We're not asking to deviate from the streetlight patterns or anything along those.
Sounds like we're getting a new style, though?
We are, yeah. They are. We require streetlights in neighborhood settings at each intersection and then at certain intervals between intersections. Our power superintendent unveiled some things for the city council just last night, a couple of new styles of streetlights that I don't think during the day anybody would probably recognize them as being any different than what we have right now. But they do direct light downward. They don't allow for the same, let's say, light spillover and that type of a thing to lessen the amount of light that works its way up into the atmosphere and throughout the community and that type of thing, so.
And we just completed a project in Heber that was, they're very much around that, so, yeah. Whatever the standards are, they'll be met.
Is it similar to the ones down on, what is it, 1400 East down in the river bottoms where, next to the new trail there?
I don't know. I'm not familiar with those.
The style would look just like the ones in Eagle Cove, or Eagle, Eagle Cove, right? Across the street from this one, but it would just be a different head inside that shines light down instead of more lateral. It'd be the black decor, whatever model that is.
So probably like the ones, I mean, I think it's been pretty universal, so.
Anyone else in the public that wants to share?
Could I just ask, do they have a picture, like the other development? Do you have a picture of what the outside of the homes will look like?
You could go to arrivehomes.com and see their plans. I'm just not the contractor for them. And so you could go to their website and see a wide variety. I think they've built a few communities in the neighborhood or in the city here.
And who is the other builder? You said there's arrive homes and another one.
So it's just a personal friend of mine that's called Vanco, just a smaller builder, does about 10 homes a year and is more semi-custom.
Okay. Okay, and people can choose to use either one?
Yes, yep. Whoever has the lot that you want, whoever purchases that lot is going to be the builder that you build with. Unless you're more interested in a different, if you don't want to go with Arrive, you would have an option B for a handful of lots.
So certain lots are assigned to Arrive?
They will.
So which lots are 33 through 26, who are they assigned to?
So they are not assigned yet. Until we get our final plat, we'll be able to, if anything's going to change, the staff will have to make that decision on who gets which lots.
Okay, thank you.
I suspect that before the city council meeting, we could get at least Arrive to give us some elevations that would be at least representative of what they plan to build here, that type of thing.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing, close the public hearing. Thoughts from the commissioners? Questions that we need to answer? One question that I had, Mike, and maybe you can help me with, with this. Just so I can compare my own neighborhood with the street widths in this new development. I live in River Cove and there are a couple of roads that narrow. I'm wondering if you can compare or show, let me know, what are the width of the roads down in River Cove as compared to here? Because there are cars that park on the street in my neighborhood. And it's, it's not a, it's actually not that bad. There's enough room that, yeah, two cars could go by even if there are cars parked on the side. And so I'm just wondering how mine would compare with what this is.
Yeah, I can pull the footage. It'll probably be a little narrower. I don't remember what phase you live in. What phase do you live in, Kevin? Oh, I just pulled it up.
Right, so right there at the south end of Sandbar, right, right there in that intersection, it narrows.
Yep, it'll look just like that.
It'll look just like that. What about where it widens back out? How wide are we?
I don't remember exactly. Probably two feet narrower, three feet?
The development we're talking about is narrower.
I think you have 24-inch curb where they went to 30, curving better. That takes an extra foot.
Okay. So a little bit narrow, narrower, but not much.
It's on a curve, so it's kind of hard. It's the same 60 feet, so I'm guessing these are five-foot planters instead of eight.
Okay. Okay, so might be a little tighter. Again, for me, with the cars that are parked on the roads, when they are there, which isn't all the time, but occasionally, it does cause me, as a homeowner that lives in that neighborhood, to drive slower through my neighborhood. So it does help, in my opinion, with traffic. People slow down when, when things are a little tighter.
Yeah, the hard part.
Do you require them for the planter strips?
I don't think there, there is. I know there are types of trees that are permitted and you have to plant one of those that are within. But I don't think you're required to put trees in your planter strips, are we?
We're not required to put them there. The city doesn't plant them. Frankly, I think that's probably one of our biggest shortcomings in terms of dealing with new development and an opportunity to, to get a neighborhood off on the right foot.
Let's change it.
Yeah, a little bit easier said than done. I think that is something that we really need to focus on.
Do you have a preference? But do you like trees in planter strips?
Well, sure, absolutely. Trees are...
Yeah.
Trees are great, especially if they're like right behind our brother Judd's house. Got a big cockwood, get one.
So, just to Dave's point, here's a neighborhood that didn't have street trees. I'm not, this is by my house, that's the only reason I know. So you have no street trees and across the street, they planted street trees. It just gives a different build in the neighborhood.
Yeah, it looks good.
Not seven or eight years, you know, and...
Yeah, it takes a little while. Any other comments?
I'm narrowing on the narrower streets, as you mentioned, Kevin. A lot of the narrowing miss speed. The death rate of an injury, severity of a person being hit at certain 10 to 15 to 25, it gets exponentially worse with every mile an hour you get above, you know, 20 to 25, 30. And so the narrower roads, the narrowings are really a, a traffic calming kind of built in. And it might seem constrictive, especially if you live on, say, 30 East where it's 80 feet of asphalt. And you're like, I love the huge streets. But it also, high school kids and everyone else that's in a hurry, you feel like you can go faster. So while moving trucks, definitely during construction, they hate it. But it's really built for the residents, not for the, necessarily the delivery guys as much and keeping that speed low for the majority of the cars to drive through there.
So I can imagine this, the first development where we've had roads this narrow. Do we have any existing developments that have, that are finished? That are, that have the same width requirements and how's that been?
So west of Maple Mountain High School, all of these have the narrower roads with the same chicane effect on the intersections. Then all of Legacy Farms, this is an old aerial, but, you know, four or 500 houses or however many there are there, all have the same 29-foot asphalt cross sections.
And I know in prior meetings, you've shown kind of traffic citation or traffic accident issues. Have you noticed any increase in accidents in these new neighborhoods as compared to other neighborhoods that don't have the narrower streets?
I don't know if I've polled that number exactly, but there's, no. We usually have complaints the first couple of weeks. Someone might move in and say they're so narrow. We tell them why and that's usually about it. They, they see the effects of it.
Auto pedestrian accidents or auto-to-auto accidents, you're not aware?
On our map, you can pull up, or anyone can pull up, I guess, if we have an accident layer?
And I'm going to go a little bit out on a limb here, Mike, but not far. It's legitimately, I think, counterintuitive to think that narrower streets are safer. They absolutely are, without question. So you could go well beyond just what we've experienced here in Spanish Fork. This is something that's been studied at nauseam by lots of different folks to try to find, you know, what that perfect kind of design is for a local street. And us as drivers, we do dumb things and we feel comfortable driving faster based on road width more than any other characteristic. Speed limits, they don't deter us. But really, it's what we feel comfortable doing. So if you just think about the streets, maybe where we tend to drive the fastest.
Center street.
Straight and wide, those are the two things. So having them be a little bit narrower and even having something like on-street parking, which again, it's counterintuitive, right? But Mike referred to, you know, the idea that you have to maybe maneuver around something. That makes me uncomfortable as a driver.
Or a door going to open up into you.
That makes me slow down. And of course, there may be very rare exceptions to that rule. But that's part of the reason that the change was made five or six years ago to tighten up our local street designs. I'd add this to it, neighborhood connectivity, having streets connect from one neighborhood to another is imperative, in my view, for lots of different reasons. Not only to, to allow for proper traffic circulation, but just to create the kind of community, I think, that people expect to live in. But making those routes less attractive than getting out to arterial and collector class roads, if indeed you're trying to traverse the community or, you know, to maybe exit Spanish Fork or that type of a thing, that's advantageous. So you don't have that propensity for cut-through traffic and that type of thing. And that's where road width as well comes into play. And also asphalt's really expensive. Storm drain systems are really expensive. And the less of the asphalt that we have, you know, less need we have to handle storm water. And, you know, over time, we think that's definitely advantageous for the community to have less to pay for, so.
UPS truck, if I call this, the thinner roads and you go to a corner of the road, you've got the UPS truck. Would that work into this?
I, sorry, I didn't hear the first part. How does he park on the side and how do you get through?
Yeah.
You go slow. You go slow. And I say this because I go up and inspect all the legacy farms and I see the flooring guy, I see the framing guy, I see all the trucks parked on the, the road. And how do I get through? Well, there's enough road there, maybe I have to wave the guy through. And then I come through and we're so used to being able to go wherever, whenever and as fast as we want. And these are really to reframe our thoughts, saying, hey, I'm in a residential neighborhood. I should be going slow. So there's doors that could open, there's kids that could run out. Best example I give is if you haven't driven through one of these new ones is if you've driven University Avenue and Center Street or the Los Armanos and there's the courthouse. Anyway, if you've driven there, it's like 15 miles an hour speed limit. And I don't dare go anything over 15 at all because there's cars that could back up, there's people crossing all over the place. It's that outside, as Dave said, that phenomenon of just, I could hit someone or I, you're very aware of what's going on around versus Center Street and you just, you just go. So we're trying to recreate that Center Street effect, but where it's most important, which is where kids play in the front yards. So.
Thank you. I, I, yeah, think that, at least for me, addresses a lot of the concerns with traffic and the reason why the city's building the roads they are. And I hope that helps answer and address some of your concerns with that. Any other thoughts, comments from the commissioners? And if none, then I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the Heritage Farms' zone change and preliminary plat approval subject to the staff's conditions.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. That'll be in the same city council meeting as the prior one. Let's see, where are we at? Looks like we've got a few more. Do we need to take a break? Okay, are we going to take a five-minute recess? Back everyone to planning commission. Let's move on to our next item. We're now looking at some zone change agenda items. First one is 174 South Overlay. Turn the time over to Dave for that.
What we're talking about here is a fairly unique regulatory tool that our zoning ordinance has, which allows for ultimately the city council to approve what effectively is a zone change. And in this case, the zone change gives the city council the opportunity to allow a property owner to use a property in such a way that doesn't comply with all of the city's development requirements. So just kind of by way of a little bit more description of what I'm talking about. Grifols. Do you guys know where Grifols is? It's a medical office, so to speak, yeah. It's a plasma donation, I shouldn't say donation, it's a business. It's located on the corner of 400, excuse me, 400 North and Main Street. For a number of years, that was a fabric store and then it sat vacant for a couple of years. When the folks came along that wanted to put that business there, that medical office, we as staff looked at the site, which we're talking about a site there, where there's an existing building, existing parking lot, no room to expand. Literally, it was what it was. There was not an opportunity to add more parking. And the question that was presented to our council was, is it worth allowing for that business to go there because of upgrades that they'll make to the site like they did? They completely renovated the structure, adapted it from a 50s-era grocery store building to a contemporary medical office building. They added landscaping, they rebuilt the parking lot and did all of those types of things. So the council weighed whether that level of improvement somehow justified allowing that business to go there, for example, without having the minimum parking requirement met. And in that case, without having the minimum amount of landscape area requirement met. And as the council studied that, you know, kind of that question, they decided that, hey, you know, we think this is worth it. We think this is a good use of the building. We think it's an enhancement for the community, provide jobs, different things like that. And they instructed us as staff to come up with a way to legally allow for that to happen, even though, again, you know, some of those, those fundamental, excuse me, fundamental minimums simply could not be met. There was no way for that to happen. This tool, this development enhancement overlay, is what came from that conversation. And again, it simply gives ultimately the city council the ability to allow for uses that don't meet some of those fundamental minimums. Does that make sense to everybody? I mean, this, this, most cities have something like this. They might call it a special exception. I think in other states, the word variance still gets used quite a bit. And since this project came about, this tool's been used a handful of other times. Vasa, I think, is probably another good example of a situation where there was a grocery store there before. The parking requirement for a health club or a gym is considerably higher than what we have for a grocery store. So as we analyzed just whether or not that site met the minimums that we have on the books in our zoning code, they didn't meet those minimums for a health club. We did some studies, felt comfortable recommending that this overlay be used so that Vasa could, could locate there even without meeting those minimums. Council approved that. And a couple of years in, we see that parking lot pretty full sometimes, but yet it hasn't been a problem. The site that, sorry.
What about Grifols? Has that been a problem with the minimum, with the fewer parking stalls? I mean, I know, looks like they're doing something behind the fire station across the street. Is that because of parking problems in this lot?
Yes, yes.
So in this instance, was it a mistake to do what we did? To reduce the parking requirement?
I think we should have handled it differently. I think everybody that was involved in that at this point would say we probably went too far in allowing for the parking reduction, just call it that. I think even Grifols would say that today. So to remedy that, Grifols is paying to improve the parking lot that's located just east of the downtown fire station on that same block. They've made a very healthy financial contribution to that project. I believe city crews are doing the work to develop that, to make that balance.
But looking, looking at the picture there, I don't know, other than telling Grifols you can't put your facility there, I don't know that we could have squizzed and out more parking stalls.
That's exactly it, right. So, and I, I think that's very germane to this proposal that we'll talk about here on South Main. And let me say this, and I'm not wanting to prolong the discussion longer than we need to, but honestly, I think I'm biased and even to the point of being kind of hamstrung sometimes in how I look at proposals. Because, for example, with the development enhancement overlay, I essentially wrote it. I knew, I know what the intent was. And I know what we intended for the limitations to be and different things like that. But that doesn't necessarily translate into, you know, how somebody might read it at face value. So I'll admit that. That being said, I think we have had some fails relative to the development enhancement overlay situations where we've been probably too quick to make a recommendation that it be used. So that's also on my mind right now as we talk about this situation. And that being said, relative to 174 South Main and parking, which is primarily the issue, I certainly don't have strong feelings. So I much more tonight want to kind of talk about your philosophy relative to what this overlay should or should not be used for, largely just so that we as staff can convey that to people when they ask us questions about what may or may not work. So that being said, Mike, if you don't mind, just maybe go into that image of the property on Main Street first.
Dave, what was the, the property was on the corner of the park, so it'd be...
First South and First East?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a great example of a fail, I think, truly. Um, in more ways than one. That was not an appropriate use of the development enhancement overlay. I think we kind of got boxed into a corner a little bit as the city there. But, uh, I don't know if that answers your question about it or not, but.
Yeah, I thought that was, yeah.
Yeah. So, this is a beautiful property. This is a beautiful home. This is, like I said a second ago, 174 South Main. You may be able to recognize the yellow there. Mexican restaurant. Um, I understand that this, uh, home has been converted in essence into a professional office building. And the applicant that we're working with would like to use it as a professional office building. We've had some conversations as staff about changes that would need to be made to the site in order for it to be converted to that use. Um, access from Main Street, uh, is an, is an issue. Um, as proposed, they have in essence about ten or eleven feet from the home to a fence that's on the northern boundary of their property there. Um, after quite a bit of discussion, I think we've concluded collectively that we're comfortable, uh, with just that building being used as an office, just simply allowing that driveway to be the access to parking that would be behind the home. That's a little bit different than our typical approach where we might have a twenty-four-foot drive aisle that would allow for two-way traffic. But all things taken into consideration, we think that's, um, probably the most appropriate way to allow for the use to be changed without really destroying some of the, the very positive characteristics that this property has. Um, that being said, uh, for a building of this size to be used as an office, just taking the, the code at, you know, its explicit language, there would need to be seven or eight parking spaces provided. And again, our code also has some specific descriptions as to how those parking spaces need to be designed and constructed and so forth. And I think that's the concern that the applicant has. Um, there is adequate room in what now is the backyard of the home to build, let's just say, eight parking spaces. It's expensive to build parking today. I don't want to speak for the applicant or intend to. I don't see her here, which surprises me. Uh, but just as she and I have talked, it's the expense of constructing that parking that's led her to making this request, which is to, in essence, use the development enhancement overlay so that she can get a business license to operate her business from this building without constructing additional parking.
How many compliant parking spaces exist there now?
Very comfortably, I can say four.
Okay.
Two in front? Two in front and, and two in the driveway?
All in the back, all in the back. I don't know how tight we can maybe get on that mic. Um, there's a garage there now and additional spaces around the garage.
If you go back to the picture from Main Street, this is, is the, is the driveway now.
Correct, yeah.
Which is extremely narrow with all those trees growing there now and everything. And from the overview that you had up, it looks like there's plenty of room. Well, I don't know about plenty, but there is quite a bit of room for them to construct that into, into parking, I guess, right?
Yeah, so that's really what I want to zero in on. Um, unlike, let's say Griffles or Vasa, where regardless of how much an applicant was willing to spend to enhance a site, the physical constraints were what they were. And that really was the genesis of the concept, which was allow, excuse me, which was to allow for particular uses where there was absolutely no way to meet the requirements of the zoning code. In this case, it's a financial issue. I am not, uh, here to say that, um, a financial concern is not suitable justification to approve the development enhancement overlay. Does that make sense? You know, perhaps that is a good, um, like I said, just justification. Um, the use may be perfect for the site. It may be beneficial to, uh, to allow for the use without a certain improvement where it simply is financially impossible for a property owner maybe to, uh, to make that improvement. But that is not what the development enhancement overlay says. Um, and again, that's not really what it was intended to do. So, just from the role that I play in the process, which generally is not that significant, except that we do have a lot of dialogue with people on the front end. Um, if you would like to see situations like this considered, then I'd suggest we add language to the overlay. That simply makes it clear that that is, that is one thing that, that can factor into a finding that maybe would need to be established before the overlay gets approved, against some type of financial hardship.
Maybe you can, maybe you can, in your, in your explanation here, you can, uh, help me out with a couple of issues. Uh, it's my understanding that the intent of the business that's in there is an insurance agent. Is that right?
I thought it was payroll, but it might be.
Are they currently?
Insurance and payroll.
Okay, insurance and payroll, which won't have a lot of patrons going into it, but there could be. And, and so, I'm, I'm kind of torn about what we've got here. The Tim Shanto House on Main Street on, what is it, 700 North? You know, he's got the parking spaces that come in from the street. And as I go up and down Main Street, there's never anybody parked there, ever. I stopped and paid my insurance bill at another insurance on Main Street and I was the only guy in there. Three agents, but I was the only guy in there, but all three of them were busy talking on the phone. In other words, what I'm saying is, is that we're doing things electronically a lot more than, than we used to. We used to go in and have an interaction with somebody. Now it's more likely that you take care of it all over the internet or over the phone. In this particular case, I'm confused about whether this should be considered for this because the applicant has told us what they want to do. But like you said, there's no drawings of, of, of what exactly they have in there or the number of spaces that could be used in there. If you say we're only going to have two people, one for this and one for that, well, if there's four rooms upstairs, it's pretty easy to put four instead of two and two in each room, so now you've got eight. Where does everybody park? And so, you know, the parking is an issue no matter where you go. Although, the one that we did on the corner of the park and First East, you know, we recognized that there wasn't going to be much there either. And so why tear up the backyard and cause a great big expense when they could park in the driveway and maybe one on the street and they're going to be taken care of? And we approved that.
Right.
So now, maybe you can help me, just like you just explained, this does not conform to the provisions that we want to see now, either by the letter of the law without the infill overlay or even the infill overlay. So, are we still going to consider it? Do we not have enough information yet? Do we not have a drawing? I mean, obviously, if this was going to be approved, we'd like to see the, the drawings of, okay, what's your configuration of your parking? You know, and I know that in the letter it states if, if anything else changes, you know, well, then you can reverse that like we did on the park property and say if that, if that business changes, then all bets are off and you have to come back and reapply for the business that is in there. Do we do that? What is it, what is it that we need to do with this infill overlay?
I'll tell you, um, I'm going to ask for your help in a little different way maybe than I typically do.
Okay.
So you just touched on things that absolutely are important. You know, having simply a clearly defined set of plans that would show what a parking lot would look like and some different things like that. Maybe, you know, a more precise, um, identification of how much parking her business would require. Um, although in all candor, it's, it's eight spaces based on the size of the building. Um, for purposes of where we're at with this applicant, I'm really, really interested just in your feedback as to whether or not, and I don't know that this is the right order necessarily, but whether or not the development enhancement overlay is the right tool to use or not the appropriate tool to use to try to accommodate her request, which is to get a business license without building additional parking? Or whether you think that's a flat-out bad idea and you don't want to consider it? Or whether maybe the development enhancement overlay should be changed in some way uh, to somehow impact, you know, how it would be applied here or maybe someplace else? Um, and I apologize for, you know, maybe throwing that much out there, but really that's, that's what we're trying to work through right now with this particular applicant. But I will say this as well, that I think for a lot of different reasons, the, uh, pressure to take homes and to convert them into non-residential uses is just as high now as it's ever been. So getting this ironed out, so we're applying it uniformly going forward would be really helpful.
Okay, follow-up question before I can answer your question. When we're, if we applied this, it would be for a professional office use, correct? Not for an insurance business. Am I right?
That is correct.
So which means any, it's not this particular applicant. It's anybody who's going to use that building in the future benefits from the variance, benefits from the development enhancement overlays on, correct?
Correct.
As long as it fits within the category of professional office use. So it, okay, now I can answer your question. I don't foresee a situation where an applicant could come in a situation like this and ask for this type of request for the entire use, because then it puts the city on the hook where if we're, if, yes, that insurance agency only needs four parking spaces. Let's say we all agree, there's an expert in insurance agency parking that comes and says, we only need three. Well, the problem is when that business changes hands, the city has zero ability to come back and say, hey, your customers are parking in front of the, the restaurant there and it's causing a problem. It's just gonna, it's a negative, it's a detriment to the neighbors if we don't stick to the code for that use for parking whenever we can. It's, it's too broad, is my answer, is, is what it is.
I have another issue. We have, we have a building being built on Main Street right now. It was an old building in disrepair. And rather than just go in and take care of a few things, it's been torn down completely and rebuilt into something that's going to be really nice on Main Street. This applicant has the same opportunity to tear down the house and build an office building. And ask for an infill overlay if it doesn't fit where that is now, but I think it probably fits. So my, my, my question is, at what point do we say, okay, well, this is a good? You know, I, I happen to think that if we, if they don't require more parking spaces than what we're talking about, you know, that's great. But I have the same concern that Joseph does, that, you know, this is a stopgap. This isn't, is this, is this what the final story is going to be? That's, that's one of the older homes in Spanish Fork and has a great history. Maybe it ought to be preserved. And that might be an issue too, if you tried to knock it down. You might, you know, have to deal with the Antiquities Act. But, having said that, you know, do we owe, do we owe the applicant anything more than we would require of anybody else if they wanted to open a business on Main Street?
Can, can the applicant currently do any work without having a business license? What are they doing currently?
Right now, the applicant office is, I think, less than a block away to the south.
So they've not actually moved?
They lease space currently there, is my understanding, yeah, so. I think that's part of why they're interested in this location. You know, it's, it's not a big change. You know, they, they would go from leasing to owning and some different things like that, as I understand it, which.
So they're not the current owner?
I don't believe they are. I think they've had it under contract, exactly, yeah.
That house has been owned by the same family that built it.
And there's no way to tie the development enhancement overlay to, to the use?
Okay, so to.
That's my question.
There is.
I think it's, I think it could be the right tool more often than not. So, it still may not apply all the time. If it was specific to the.
Business.
Business and was tied to the business license.
So.
If it was, it might work. Otherwise, if it's the entire use, it's too broad.
In past, we've done that. I agree.
We've done that one time before. And we have yet to see how that works. In all honesty, I'm optimistic that that, and, and just to explain.
The city would have to manage and check up on that. Do we have the capability to do that?
Our check, our, our check in that case, I think, is pretty straightforward.
Business license.
Which is that if, and when a different business makes application for that location, then we have a gal that's pretty on top of things and she.
Is it Kimberly? Yeah, she's on top of it. You're right, we're good.
We are.
Did, do you understand the concept there? So in this case, that would be a matter of, okay, uh, we will issue a business license for this particular payroll and insurance business. We will not require necessarily site improvements, let's just say. Um, however, that will be reconsidered, reviewed if or when the business changes. And we might even be able to put some additional teeth in with an approval that would say, you know, in the event that, you know, there clearly becomes some parking issue, the city may revisit it and perhaps we withhold a business license um, in the future even from that business if there's a problem. So I can think of all kinds of.
It looks like a special use permit at that point.
It sure is akin to that, right?
Yep.
It's a different mechanism, but yes.
With conditions.
The same intent.
With conditions to the special use permit.
Yep.
But the only thing that's stopping this applicant from complying is four parking stalls.
Is four parking stalls, I think that's fair to say, yeah. And frankly, the parking stalls that they have now don't meet our standards. I'm not hung up on that, but, um, it maybe, let me just, the ideal, like, for us to walk out there and look around the site and say, yep, this meets all of our code requirements. There would be a brand-new curb and guttered parking lot in the back that has a stormwater system and all of that, uh, which is why they say it costs fifty thousand dollars, where when I look at it, I think, man, that should be like sixteen, seventeen thousand bucks, right? No, no. Uh, there should be a wall where the property abuts a residential use. Um, not cheap these days either. So we're talking about foregoing that kind of stuff.
So tying it to a business use, I assume that's also on an individual license. Let's say this person has a friend that does the same type of business and decides to come in and join her in this building and now you've got two of the same business use, but you've got two totally separate businesses which you're going to bring in.
You can't run a business without your own business license though. So if it's a separate LLC, separate entity, they need their own business license.
So we would link it to the number of business licenses as well?
We, I think we would, at least be my suggestion, that it be linked to a specific business.
License.
Now, yep.
With conditions of growth, right? So what if they hire, number of employees matter, things like that.
Okay, so.
You'd have to check on.
You're opening a whole can of worms by the more we go. The more we're down this travel.
You can, yes. I, I would almost say you link it to a bit. But then, yeah, as it grows, what if you now start to get complaints because of that single business now has a lot of employees? I don't know.
You have to be able to put conditions on, on the variance. You have to be able to, such as a number of employees.
But then who's, who's checking that? Who's going to go and say, okay, it's been a year. Last year you had four, what are you at now?
And you won't even run into most of these issues unless it's a parking variance. If it's a landscape variance, it's not, it's not even close to the same thing, right?
Okay, so you guys, you guys get where we're at and you're having the same conversation now that we've been having for a while. Um, so just maybe to add more color, uh, as to what I'm thinking about, really, this is a matter of how much do you value being able to use this property? You know, with maintaining its, its beauty and character as it sits now with this use versus maintaining maybe a more optimally efficient system that the city has for regulating parking and business licenses and things like that? The approach that we're talking about, it's going to. The approach that we're talking about, it's going to require at some point in time, some more effort and some more manpower. It might be nominal, truly, it easily could be nothing. So I mean, it's just, I think a matter of how, how you want to weigh those two things.
I wish that the applicant were here, because I don't feel like I can, I can approve. A zone change like this with so little information that we have. I think we've all talked about some really good ideas and I think that they need to be incorporated into this. But how do we do that when we don't even know? You know, the, the letter, I understand and I, and I'm sympathetic. But I think that there needs to be some fleshing out of what exactly would be represented in that building. Because it's certainly large enough to do a lot more than what they're asking for. So how long is somebody going to pay? For Main Street property to run their business out of? If they can't expand and let another tenant help them with their rent? If they're leasing it or whatever? I mean, these things, we don't know.
How often does a business license need to be renewed?
Annually.
So what if we?
Tie it to the business license.
Tie it to the business license and let's say they've grown. And they need to have that license renewed and now they don't, you know, meet the parking that we think.
How do you know if they've grown? How are you checking?
Well, now because, well, the way you would know is because you're now getting parking complaints. So now you investigate the parking complaints and you see, okay, you've grown. We're having complaints and issues, we can't renew your license now because of this and now you have to go down the other path.
And all this discussion, I'm, I'm catching some heads shaking by some important people in the room.
Then their businesses are even more, and they relied on their.
Now you're asking someone to do something that, that really shouldn't be their job. You know, to, to be the, to be the enforcement officer on this. And what are you going to ask for them? You know, you don't ask that from other businesses of how many employees do you have? And how many parking spaces do you currently have? Do you have enough to cover who you have? So, you know, all those things need to be talked about and unfortunately, we don't have the applicant here. We don't have drawings, we don't have anything that really helps us with this. We're talking about something that's just a possibility.
So to that end.
I'm not saying no, I'm just saying we need more information.
We have some other folks. I'm just going to throw out a thought real quick. In the interest of being respectful, maybe of everybody's time and that type of a thing. If you're perhaps willing to entertain some type of an arrangement. That would tie perhaps a future improvement requirement to a new business occupying the property. Or maybe to growth of the original business that would receive a business license. Then I think probably tonight, I would ask that you continue this. And let us as staff wade through that with the applicant. And come back with something that is certainly more defined than what we're talking about tonight.
It's a public hearing, right?
And if you do that, which is great. Whatever you come up with, it has to be very, very clear whether or not compliance is occurring. Because if there's any ambiguity and the city grants that to this business. And they go down the road and then the city comes down 30 months later, they've been operating there, operating there successfully. And we say, no, you now need to do all these improvements. They have a mu, the city has so much more liability in that point if it's not extremely clear that they are or are they are not compliant. It has to be crystal clear.
In my mind, being able to identify compliance or non-compliance is going to be much easier than enforcing compliance. If indeed we identify that problem, that is a significant challenge. So you know, so there's another pitfall.
Unless if you deal, unless if it's linked to the license and they just don't give their license renewed. And it may be six months that they still have their license available to use and they're non-compliant for six months or whatever. But then, once that expires, the city has all the leverage.
And I think the overlay works better when the site can't, they can't conform because of site size limitations.
That's, yep, and that's where I go back to, that was entirely the intent of it, yeah.
It makes sense, because we just went the rounds and that's how I see the only way that makes sense is, is the site, the site size limitation.
All right.
Let's go into public.
Let's go into public hearing. We are now in public hearing. Does anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Seeing none, we move out of public hearing and I would make a motion that we continue this.
I second it.
Dave, do we need to have, maybe one of our work sessions? We review this development overlay, development enhancement overlay? To maybe put some. Corral around it to make it more easier to use for the city and all that?
I think that's a great idea and, you know, it's new enough, I want to say we've used it now five or six times. Check out those, those sites, you know, a few years, you know, after going into play and see what you think. See if it is accomplishing the purpose or if it needs to be changed or I think it's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item, Blue Ox.
I promise for the city council agenda, you guys will be closer to the front end of that, so. These guys have sat through a couple of long meetings now.
We remember, we remember one very.
Remember one, right. That being said, I'm going to be really brief because just a couple of months ago, you had a pretty lengthy conversation about the proposal. Staff's perspective is pretty straightforward for this property that we're talking about, which is. Really on South Main, south side of the Spanish Fork River, in fact. It's adjacent to the city-owned wetland property there on the east side of the river. Again, not far south of the Spanish Fork River. I think most of us know what we're talking about, right, in terms of the site, so. The applicant's proposal is to have the zoning changed to allow for a residential development there. The requested zone, I believe, is R1-6. The current general plan designation for the property being medium density residential. And maybe I'll say it differently, the R1-6 zone is consistent with the general plan designation. That being said, still, staff has some concerns about changing the zoning at this time. Maybe not necessarily in this order, but first of all, the subject property is outside of the city's growth boundary. In one respect, you know, that's simply a line on a map. And, you know, maybe viewed as somewhat trivial from that perspective. I don't think that's how we as view, we as staff view it, we view it as a very significant. Signal that the city council sends relative to properties that are ready to be developed and that includes being zoned for development. Properties that are within the growth boundary signify to us as staff. That there is an effect of green light and we take the position much more readily to work to facilitate development. Whereas properties outside of the growth boundary, we typically view as, as not quite being ready yet. To be part of a development approval. The subject property is in the floodplain. Likewise, that's a very significant issue from staff's perspective. The floodplain can be changed. There's a process that people go through, conditional process, kind of a final process as well. To have FEMA's maps revised in order to change the floodplain. Take properties out of the floodplain, you could say. That being said, we increasingly come to feel as the city that modifying the floodplain. Certainly on any kind of a significant scale, probably is more detrimental than beneficial over the long haul. And that's another concern that staff has with this particular proposal. Probably the last really significant one has to do with the long-term perspective that Spanish Fork City has. I would say for the property and the, the bigger river bottoms area. Most of the river bottoms, which is distinct from this property, I want to make that clear. Is designated for some type of agricultural use on the land use map of the general plan. And really never has been contemplated for any kind of large-scale development. In fact, you could say certainly that the general plan today clearly identifies the river bottoms. As an area that should be preserved for non-residential uses. We understand that that concept in different ways, probably over the long haul is somewhat flawed. That simply taking a swath of 2,000 acres and saying, you know, that, that, for example, may have no development potential and, and should always remain. The open space may be for the rest of the community. We don't think that that's the best approach to take to dealing with an area and the folks that own properties in that area. And to that end, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but we've been working on a program with the intent. Of providing a mechanism whereby that goal of preserving the river bottoms. And keeping development out of the river bottoms could be achieved, but not at the detriment. Of property owners in the river bottoms by giving them an opportunity maybe to realize some monetary value of their property. Notwithstanding maybe the fact that the actual use of that property may never change. The work that we're doing on that probably is still a few months away from being, being wrapped up. We think this particular property is fairly key though to that effort for a couple of different reasons. And feel that approving a zone change at this time would be a mistake while that is still in process. The last thing that I'll note goes back to the growth boundary, certainly a part of the consideration that's made. When the growth boundary is changed. Pertains to the availability of utilities. And maybe access to other facilities like streets and that type of a thing. We've had enough conversations with the applicant that, and we understand how utility services could be provided to this property. But for a variety of different reasons, including the work that is happening on that, that broader vision for the river bottoms. We don't think this is the time to make a change. To, to help facilitate the delivery of utility services to this property. And for those different reasons that I just mentioned, staff has recommended that the proposed zone change be denied, at least at this time.
Any comments? Got to go into public hearing. Any, any questions, then, then you're free to make any motion you'd like.
Have there been any changes to this since the last, since we saw and to make comments on two or three months ago?
Not necessarily any changes that I'm aware of. We've had additional dialogue about utilities and, and how that might. For example, sewer service might be delivered to the site and that type of a thing, but no big changes that I'm aware of.
So I've got, I've got a question for the applicant, I don't know who's going to speak. So, right now, general plan for at least this piece of property is medium density. You're looking at with your plan, it looks like you're wanting a zone of R1-6. With your preliminary plat, would you be coming in with a master plan development where your lot sizes? Do you know what your, your lot sizes are looking at? I mean, are you going to be below the 6,000 square feet or where are you guys at with that?
Two point, we've, we've laid this out kind of high level. We, staff has graciously conceded that they don't want us to spend a lot of time diving into all the details. Because it's, you know, this is more hot button than some of the other zone changes that you've seen tonight. That being said, our expectation and our plans are to be fully conforming to your current code. We're not looking for any major variances, so we're seeing those minimums, we're seeing being at or below your maximum densities. Meeting your road requirements, there's, there's nothing here that should be outside of, of your standard subdivision.
You guys own property to the east of this as well, at least Blue Ox does, that's all in the general plan of agriculture. That is not going to change anytime soon, obviously. What are your plans with, with the other property you guys own?
The, the other property that we own is all within the county. At this time, we know, we have no plans or anticipation of in the near future bringing that into the city. Anything we may or may not do, I think will, will be decided based on what we can do within the county.
And one of the concerns that was brought up is the floodplain. How would you as a developer address the floodplain issue? Because that's obviously a big concern.
And, yeah, floodplain is, is an issue for us as well. As, as Dave alluded to, there's various ways to address that. And basically you've got several issues when you start dealing with floodplain. It's an elevation issue and it's a volume issue. You know, how much volume of water needs to pass at certain locations and, and what space is allowed for that to happen? So when you mitigate floodplains, you can look at kind of a dike or levee system where you're compacting fill, creating barriers. That should the water breach, everything behind that then becomes in danger. The, the other option is to simply just lift the ground, raise the ground, add dirt and, and material. Such that it's, it's higher than the floodplain. While that can be very successful, it's only successful in the event that there's still enough volume or space for that water to go down. You know, and, and everyone in this room who's ever been in any river, you know, understands that perfectly. When the river widens out, it slows down, when it narrows up, it speeds up. And so I'm not going to pretend that I'm an engineer and understand all the dynamics of, of what we would need to do here. I pay my engineers lots of money to figure that out and, and, and with the expectation that, that we can. As we've looked at this and as, as we've looked at the dynamics of our development and how we establish some of the elevations. Dyke system or a levee system is, is not what we anticipate to do. We anticipate on, on simply raising the elevation of the ground. Should, should we have approvals and, and appropriate design that, that functions that way?
By raising the ground, how does that affect surrounding properties? I'm not an engineer either, I'm just wondering if, if just this little piece were to be raised. You've got the pond to the west, but then you've got all the farmland surrounding you, how do, how would that affect everyone else?
What's your primary concern in there, you're just kind of generally, you don't?
I'm just wondering if you raise it on your end, does that then cause flooding in the farmland area? What?
I wouldn't think that we're increasing or decreasing the probability of flooding on, on the properties around us. But I couldn't speak authoritatively on that, I would leave that to my engineer to, to define.
Aaron, if I might.
Do you know how much they'd have to raise it to be out of the floodplain?
So their area is defined as an AO zone, which means at least a foot. But it hasn't been studied in depth by the Army Corps, FEMA, et cetera. So they'd have to do a study to define what that is. And at that point, they could decide how high they'd have to raise it. And to Kevin's point, they have a model of the whole river. This spot they didn't quite get to far enough, that's why it's an AO, not an AE zone. So as they go through their model, they can start raising and lowering different areas, adding levees, bridges, different things. And then run the model and see how it affects. So it's not just raise this, it affects this, they trace it all the way down through different types of storms, rain events, different things. So it's, it's all done through the model.
And if these gentlemen were to work with FEMA to modify the floodplain map, that's one of the things that FEMA would review. They'd study, okay, how does this change impact the surrounding area? And that's just part of the course of, of what they analyze.
So let's say we pushed this through or approved it or whatever. Is there the possibility then that they approach FEMA and FEMA says. You know, as much as you want to put homes here and as much as you want to raise it. We're, we don't want to allow or the floodplain and everything else, it just doesn't make sense to put homes here. Could they deny it? Could FEMA, does FEMA have the ability to tell the developer or a city that, no, you cannot put homes there?
I don't know.
I don't know if they would do that, I think it's one of those, you can build your way out of anything, but the cost is exponentially expensive as you go. So, yeah, build a six-foot levee for four miles and then you can, you know, I mean, it starts getting a little crazy there. So I don't think they would say, no, you cannot, but.
But these are the requirements that you would need to.
So you can see here on the map, there's the hashed area, this is the AO zone. This is the AO zone. There. So that's the zone that they would need additional study on to define right where they need to be. But this AE, which is that light blue, and then this darker blue, those are very defined. It's in the model, it's engineered to know exactly where those base flood elevations are. That blue, the one on the south, I need a little bit more. But, yeah, if you raise this, where's my cursor? If you raise this area here, the water that would usually come here on pond and kind of hold the water for a bit would then be pushed to another property. So that trickle-down affects what the model would be able to tell you.
I think Commissioner, or probably more just our thought right now as staff, is that approving a zone change, it certainly signifies that the floodplain is not a paramount maybe concern for the city or that type of a thing.
But I would think that it would be...
And that's a signal that we would suggest we aren't ready to send.
Okay, yeah, because without the studies and everything else, I would be concerned about the floodplain, for sure. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
I think while I'm standing here, just may, a couple of things we want to call out and echo, you know, we appreciate what staff has done in working with us for, I don't know, five, six years as we've looked at this property. You know, we do feel we are conforming. We purchased this property with a contract in place that anticipated and inferred development on it, and so our efforts aren't because we're not respectful of staff, it's just we're, you know, we're going with the original intent and expectations that have maintained with this property for some time when that was sold to the city, you know, back when we put in that well lands. So the idea of development and in working through the issues that do exist, because there are some, I think, you know, we have an expectation, staff has alluded to the same, that we can work through the issues, it's just a function of moving through the process and moving on to what the next hurdle is, to your point, so.
What's the total acreage of this development, this park?
We're, yeah, we're just about 11 and a half acres just over that.
11 and a half, okay.
You know, when we were here a couple of months ago, we were kind of given by this committee kind of two major concerns to address. One was the ability to get utilities, the other is support of other people in the river bottoms. We've approached and talked with many of our neighbors and other people in the region. We don't, most of them are not against what we're trying to do. Some of them are actually very supportive of what we're trying to do. So the idea that, you know, we're going against the community like you see in some of your others, that's not the case. We have that support. And to your point, the other item that you specifically called out was identifying utilities. And I think Seth Perrin said it best, it's a matter of time and money, we can figure it out. And so that's, that's kind of the reason we've asked to be put on for a vote, because we feel like we're checking boxes and doing everything we need to do. We still understand a denial if it comes, but we want to make sure we fully understand what the denial is and that it's not an issue we can't overcome.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right. With that, let's move into public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that would like to address us? Okay, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. So, sounds like the city obviously has some concerns, which are similar to my own. Floodplain is a big issue. I guess my question for this would be, what are the steps that need, because personally, I don't want this to keep coming up month over month over month for the next three or four or five years or whatever, like it has been. What do we see as the future process for this specific piece of land? He talks, the developer talked about checkboxes he's trying to go through. Personally, I don't think it's ready, and we've already heard one motion that's probably going to go through tonight. But I guess I would like to address, you know, if we're going to deny this, what do we see as the future of this piece of property or the checkboxes that these guys need to do or that we all need to do as a city to move forward with this property? Either for them to say, okay, it's not going to be developed ever, so we might as well abandon it and try and sell it and get rid of it or whatever? Or it will be at some point, but at what point? What needs to happen for that to take place, I guess?
What Dave outlined, four of them, is that I agree with wholeheartedly, and I think we outlined in our last meeting on this.
So the growth boundary. So what needs to happen for them to get within the growth boundary? So that's why it can't happen now, but what changes for them to fall within the growth boundary? So that's one question. Floodplain, it sounds like it's all, once we've decided to move forward or whatever, then we approach FEMA and we figure levees out, raise the ground, whatever. It sounds like that's something that eventually could be figured out. What were the other, I know we're trying to figure out the whole river bottoms vision and what do we do with TDRs and everything else? That sounds like it's just a matter of time, we're still doing research there. So, infrastructure, so utilities and everything else, growth boundary. Dave, maybe you can address that.
I'd love to, and maybe I just want to do it by going a slightly different direction.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking about things that could happen, right? So I'm going to, I'm going to speak from kind of the point of making some assumptions. And frankly, I anticipate the dialogue, maybe even to pick up between the applicants and the city in future weeks and months. And I'm going to describe what I think the ideal would be, given other conversations that we've had about the river bottoms. So first of all, we've been talking about TDRs and without going into a lot of detail on that right now, I think we're down to needing to, in actual ordinance language, address two or three fairly key issues, but also fairly straightforward issues before we have a draft of that program ready to talk about with you and other stakeholders. Might be next week, might be next month, certainly it's going to be before Halloween, let's say. That being the case, again, kind of working from the ideal perspective, it would be to have a TDR program put into action that would give the city a reason to never amend the growth boundary. Because the goal is to not facilitate growth in the river bottoms. To give the city a reason to never support or to never see the floodplain changed, because that's consistent with the city's goal of not having development in the river bottoms and having that remain agricultural land. Never having city utilities extended, at least throughout certain parts of the river bottoms, maybe, let's say. And doing all of that while property owners feel like they're getting treated fairly, because there is a system in place that helps them, you know, maybe recoup an investment or otherwise to realize value that their property has. That's what we're working towards right now. That's the goal, you know, that's the marching orders, I think, that we've been given as staff. That being said, I readily acknowledge that there are lots of different wheels, I'm sorry, there are lots of different ways that, I was going to say, the wheels could fall off that effort and, you know, have it not be as successful as we'd like. And that does intimidate me a little bit because of just some of the unknowns, I think, that exist. But still, we're optimistic, we're not working on it to fail. We're committed to making that program work and to have all of the things that I mentioned ultimately happen with the river bottoms, you know, basically just that it doesn't change.
So with those four items, even from my perspective, my opinion, if all those four items were addressed, I would still be against a zone change in this area. We'd still be faced with an RR zone, being requested to go to an R1-6, and the way the river bottom sits right now, if those four things were taken care of, I would still not be in favor of this.
So would you be more in line with having the general plan amended and getting rid of the medium density on that piece of property?
I would, I would look at that after we know what the vision plan is for the, I think we should look at that, once we know what the vision plan is.
I'm with Todd on this one, sorry.
Me too.
I'm with Todd. I sat on the lot, I sat on the parcel, I looked around, I drove around. The general plan was adopted for this medium density in 2009. I, there's no guarantee for an applicant when they go before Planning Commission, City Council, ever. There's always inherent risk for them at any time. And I just don't think, independent of all those things, medium density is a bad fit for that spa, for me.
I think we're kind of held up here primarily by the river bottoms vision until that is defined. I don't know how we take action on something that, you know, we're putting the cart before the horse. If we do that, we're throwing all of that hard work into the wind because that's been discussed and cussed for a long time. And there is a committee that's working through that, and TDRs are part of it, but only part of it. The river bottoms vision plan needs to take into consideration what to do on the south side of the river. I don't know that that's been really fully discussed by those guys. They're talking more globally about what's going to happen with the river bottoms. But until that is somewhat resolved, I just don't feel good about putting anything into action until we know what that river bottoms vision plan is, and then we can work on the floodplain, the utilities, the growth boundary and everything else. But until we know what the citizens want in the river bottoms, I don't feel good about putting that cart before the horse yet. I don't, I don't think that it's right yet. How's that?
Commissioner Trainer?
I think it's the responsibility of the property owner to address these findings that are outlined in the application. And until that's done, I don't think it's proper that the Planning Commission or the city spend any time today based upon these recommendations to move forward with the zone change.
You want to make a motion?
Well...
Now's the time, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd make a motion that proposed zone change that is before us tonight and to be recommended to the city council, denying the zone change to the property owners. Based upon the findings that are outlined in the staff report, that the property's outside the growth boundary, the bottoms, river bottoms issue hasn't been, hasn't been in the process, and that the property's located in the floodplain, which, as a side, in my opinion, is a killer. You're, we heard, okay, I'm starting to ramble. Okay, that's what I'm proposing.
That's your motion. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Trainer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Ernest. Let's do a roll call vote this time. Commissioner Ernest?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendenhall?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Trainer?
Aye.
Okay, so it does not pass this time. So, all right, next agenda item. Oakberry Trucking.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind me asking, is anybody here for Oakberry Trucking? Do you mind if we go to the Hearst then, just because you guys have been waiting?
Wayne fell asleep two or three times, I saw him.
This is a general plan amendment. So a general plan amendment for the Hearst subdivision.
Kind of a unique proposal that we have, and it's, I think, a fairly unique property. The proposed zoning that we'll see that corresponds with a plat that we currently have under review is R1-6. The current general plan designation for the property is not consistent with that particular zone. The R1-6 zone is more dense than what that current designation would permit. Does that make sense? So different general plan designations are intended to correspond with different zoning districts. The designation that this property has right now is low-density residential. The R1-6 zone is consistent with the medium-density residential designation. So that's the proposed change, going from low-density to medium-density. This, in effect, would be step one to allowing the property to be developed in the R1-6 zone. So like I just said, we as staff were also reviewing a proposed preliminary plat for the property that is a master plan development or would be proposed as a master plan development in the R1-6 zone. We also have a zone change application that's in process to change the zoning to R1-6. But previous to staff being able to recommend that the zone change be approved to R1-6, this step is necessary because we would not recommend that a zone change happen unless it's consistent with the general plan. Does that make sense so far? I mean, we talked about zoning and general plan.
It's just an amendment to the general plan right now, the rest of the information is just...
May or may not.
For future use, we'll go with when it comes forth for the zone change.
Right. And frankly, the action that we're asking you to make a recommendation on tonight, I think is going to largely determine the outcome of what else ends up on future agendas. Can you turn on the general plan map for us, Mike, there? So just to show specifically, again, what we're talking about. Yeah, thank you. So what he's identifying right there, that's basically the subject property. This color here is low-density residential. This here is, sorry, this here is medium-density residential, the yellow. So effectively, the request is to have that area there changed to match what is found to the west and kind of across the road to the north, across Canyon Road there, where Salisbury's developed that property here this past year, which right now is also designated medium-density residential in the general plan. Can you zoom in on that a little bit for us? The general plan is not intended to be lot or property-specific. This is something that we use as the city to make fairly broad decisions about what the right land use is for a property, probably focusing more on the relationship between one land use and another than what is a specific ideal fit for an individual property. So, for example, for a change to be approved for the site that we're talking about here, I would probably suggest that we consider changing the general plan designation for everything between the Hearst property and Canyon Road while we're at it.
The two existing homes are there?
Right. So we'd essentially just take that corner and change that whole designation to medium-density residential.
So Dave, with that, you just mentioned we don't try and rezone what doesn't fit the general plan. Is that when you're thinking of zoning up to a higher density? But what about, what if you want to zone? So let's say we change this whole thing to a medium. Let's say somebody buys a house, tears it down, wants to rebuild something there. They can still build the same density as what was there, right? They don't have to now go to a higher density, or do they?
I don't believe Spanish Fork City has ever been concerned about that at all. There are other communities where that's becoming an issue, where people want like a minimum density. That hasn't been an issue for us. I imagine it wouldn't be in the near future a concern.
Okay.
I like the way that my... I like the way that Mike drew that out, so that, that's probably a good representation of how we would recommend that the general plan be changed, if that's something that you're comfortable with.
Are you okay with R1-6?
I, here's my answer to that.
With an MPD.
Yeah.
Maybe if we can go to just an image of their plat. Do we have that in there? My thoughts about this are fairly similar to what I tried to describe about the master plan developments that we talked about earlier tonight on 1400 East. Whether a project's good with 36 lots, or 30, or 42, I don't think that we as staff that are trying to make recommendations, maybe based on some type of technical aspect, I don't think we necessarily can help with that, truly. I think this is a subjective thing. Having this property develop in this way is not going to create a traffic problem in the neighborhood. It's not going to create a utility problem. It's not going to have an adverse impact on neighboring property values. It's not going to introduce an unsavory element in the neighborhood. Nothing like that at all. But, I think the same would be said if, let's just say there were 30% fewer lots here. And, you know, the lots were 30% wider and bigger and that type of a thing. I don't mean to sit on the fence with this, but I think that's an appropriate role for us to play on this proposal. I think you make absolutely a case for the change in the general plan with the idea that, that certainly signals to staff and the applicant that there's going to be a likelihood that you'd look favorably on than the zone change in the plat applications. But, just as I'm saying that, you know, using a different zoning district would be, I think, the same, in my view.
Question for you. So, Mike just expanded the properties that could be affected by a decision tonight. Were any of those property owners, were each of them notified that that might happen tonight? That they may get lumped into a general plan change, potential general plan, recommendation of general plan change?
The way that it was noticed, I think that's true, yes.
Okay. Specifically, that even their properties were part of the discussion for the general plan change?
I think that's true, yes.
Because the plat I'm seeing, okay, all right, I don't see that.
Mike, can you please go back to the...
And that's something that we easily could clarify. We really could.
Can you zoom out a little bit again for me? So, we've got medium all right here. We've got medium here, and we've even got medium here. So, I guess my question is, if we're looking at this, now if you could zoom in a little bit for me, why, why don't we tie the two together? And, or at least, why don't we follow the road? Because it seems like in the future with development, block sizes and everything else, seems like...
Maybe we could hear from the, the applicant, because he's aware of some of the things that are there. I know that one thing is, is that there is some drains in there that drain water off from the hill on the properties that are on the road there, right, Wayne?
I'm not sure what you're talking about. The only drain that I'm aware of is from along the back of all the houses, or...
Corey lives.
Wayne, can you use the microphone, please?
Yeah. What, on the road that comes down off of the hill there, I know there are a few homes along the edge of the hill.
Yes.
That had to have a drain system put in after they built these right here, because they were getting water in their basements. And there are two drains, one about right there, and one about right there, that take the water off of that hill. I don't know if there was a special service district or what in that particular area there, but I, is there anything in there?
So, the only thing that I know of is a drain right, where he's drawn the line right there. There is a drain that drains those homes.
And it comes down right in that area?
I don't know where it connects to. Honestly, I don't know that.
Yeah. So, would these... Yeah. I know my son lives in that house. And there's a drain that comes between those two houses, and then continues down here. It probably connects into that one. Anyway, I'm, I'm just saying that that may be a consideration when you, when you look at roads, then, you know, why wouldn't you come over to this road and designate the same thing? I don't know that, I think it's wise to take the houses up here because a developer that may want to come in here, may want to, may want to take those homes. And it may even make better development out of that. I don't know. I think that's a wise thing to do, is to include that. But I don't know that I'd come over, is this, what's the name of the road, Wayne? It's up on the, is it?
So, this is the one up above?
Yeah.
That's Corey's house, I think, right there.
Yeah, this is the road right here.
Yeah.
Is it Oak View, or Oak?
Canyon Crest.
Canyon Crest. Canyon Crest Road. I think I'd leave that, and maybe even leave these homes out because they're existing. But I like the idea of coming up here and doing that, to include that into that zone.
Are there any infrastructure concerns from staff, as far as like storm or sewer?
I know this sits down low, off of Canyon.
They're going to build it up a bit. They're going to build it up a bit. And then their detention and stormwater stuff's been worked out. I feel like we have a pretty good solution of how that all, that will all work. City staff has been out to the side. They've TV'd a bunch of things, and I think we have a pretty good solution worked out there. As far as water, sewer, pressure irrigation, all that, it's relatively standard for what we look at.
There are, and there are, you know, there's higher density here that has been built.
Right.
And then, of course, the big subdivision down. This is all high-density. Now, continuing all the way down to the stakeout.
So, tonight, we need to designate or specify...
Master plan amendment.
Exactly where, where we're considering. How does this work?
I, Mike, I really appreciated that, that line work that you had there. There are properties, including the Hearst and others adjacent to it, that I think still have development potential, that aren't part of an existing subdivision. And I would say that we focus on that. So, that's how I would define the specific proposed map change. That being said, and you can see from some of the other imagery that we have there, just how different districts are indicated on the map. Really, the intent isn't to say that the designation follows necessarily a particular legal description or anything that's anywhere near that precise. Much more, you know, broad-brush-ish to say, you know, in this case, you know, properties adjacent to Canyon Road probably would be how I'd describe this change, with the idea that properties adjacent to Canyon Road, you know, for different reasons, are an appropriate place to have higher density than, you know, maybe properties that are, are removed from Canyon Road, or, you know, a major thoroughfare like that. Just simply that broadly. Now, this is a unique proposal in that we have a lot of definition as well. We have a plat, we have the zone in mind, and those types of things, which I think also is helpful for you to obviously be aware of, but also to, to consider as part of the, the proposal. This is great for us as staff, because if you're comfortable with this notion, you know, again, we're going to, we're going to take that as a signal that you're comfortable with the plat, and we'll get that ready expeditiously and have that back on an agenda here soon. Or if you're not, then we go a different route. So, that's, you know.
Wayne, this is your house, the last one. Does the Hearst family own all but the corner house on that road?
Yes.
You still own all those?
No, there's one, no, there's some more in between there.
Or is there two homes there?
So, you've got?
That one and that.
Yeah, there's, I think, two.
You own all but two that are direct, that are but Canyon Road?
Yes.
What's your opinion of this?
Of that change?
Yeah.
It doesn't, I don't see that it'd affect us at all, or I don't, I don't have a problem with it, no. I don't have a problem with it.
I guess the, I guess the question I have for you is, is that, how does, how does the Hearst family feel, are you planning on staying in your home and your, and your other siblings, or, you know, would you, would you move if?
I'm planning on staying in my home. I can answer the others.
You've got a wife that won't let you move. I guess if somebody made the right offer, maybe you would.
Yeah, down the road, I don't, you know, that's a big, pretty big lot I have. Maybe I don't want that much of a lot. I, you know, I, I don't, I don't foresee moving anytime soon, but things change.
This is a unique property in that you have some natural barriers. Well, it's not natural that the homes are around it on the southeast and then on the west, but, you know, that's kind of a bowl, like we're talking about, and a pretty steep hill up to you guys' house. So...
So, by making this change, doesn't necessarily mean now that these homes are non-conforming, because it's all residential. It just means now they have the opportunity in the future, if they were to buy a couple of lots, buy a couple of homes, they could tear those down and build something that now fits within the R1-6 or the medium-density general plan, right? So, it really doesn't change anything for existing homes?
Dave, staff has been out there and looked, and apparently, Dave, they've done, or I mean, Mike, they've done some preliminary studies on that and haven't found much of anything that would be negative in the proposal. Is that true?
Right.
Okay.
How do you guys feel about Dave's original idea of just including the land that's not yet newly developed? Does it, does it matter, or?
Or do we go, so what's staff's opinion? Is it easier, or does it make more sense to follow the roads, or to just look at the specific properties?
All property line.
Or does it matter?
To put it this way, we're going to use a line to go around this area on the map that will be so fat that it won't matter.
Won't matter?
Truly. I mean, that's really, I mean, you can kind of look how the other areas are defined.
Yeah.
And, and frankly, we, we debated on whether or not this change tonight was necessary. It wasn't a long debate, because part of the philosophy of the general plan is that, you know, we're looking at it from a higher level. And in this case, you've got medium density right across the street to the north. You've got medium density across the street to the west. You know, is this property really in that different of a circumstance? No, but at the same time, you do have those streets that divide it, and it is part of, you know, kind of a different area because of that. And we felt that because of that characteristic, having this change made, and having you consider it, was important before we brought a recommended zone change to you. So...
It, it would make a lot of sense to keep, to include the houses on Canyon Road in the proposal.
I'd only recommend that. Yeah, that's the only.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Any additional questions for the applicant before we go into public hearing? All right, let's move into public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that's here to address this, if you could state your name, where you live.
Nope.
Don't all jump up at once. All right, seeing none, let's move out of public hearing. Any additional comments or questions?
The question that I have, then, is that what are we being asked to do tonight? Because I'm not, I'm not certain of, of how to phrase the...
To change the general plan from RR to?
R1-6.
It's really close.
It's currently low-density.
Medium density. From low-density to medium-density.
Do we need to designate where?
Maybe as indicated.
As indicated.
During the discussion tonight.
The purple, not the red.
And if that's how you feel, we'll go purple and not red.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion?
I will make that motion. I thought that Dave had really good verbiage in there that, that we recommend. This is a recommendation on this one, right, Dave?
Yes.
We recommend that we, that the general plan be amended to the designated area to move it from RR...
From low-density.
Low-density to medium-density, and not, not...
Okay, we have a motion. Have a second. Let's do a roll call vote once again. Commissioner Ernst?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendenhall?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Trainer?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, that passes. That'll go to the City Council in a couple of weeks. All right, going back now to Oakley Berry, jumping back a little bit. Oakley Berry Trucking. This is a zone change.
Several of you will remember when, just a meeting or two ago, some text of our zoning code was changed to make this particular property eligible for this overlay to be approved. So, we probably, as staff, have kind of taken it for granted, that after that was approved by the City Council with your favorable recommendation, that you're inclined now to approve the overlay. So, this is just that action. This is the property that the overlay would be applied to. In essence, the, the logic behind allowing storage units in this location, whereas otherwise, we no longer would allow new storage unit projects in such close proximity to I-15. I think it's twofold, but really, the main driver is that the city anticipates building a really, really big wastewater treatment plant right next to this property. So, I'll reiterate what I mentioned before, but when this property owner then came to us during the course of developing this property in a different way, and said, "Boy, I'm a little bit concerned about my long-term ability to recoup the investment that I'm looking to make in some office warehouse kind of development and things like that." If indeed, having this wastewater treatment plant right next to me somehow deters people from wanting to lease that space, when he explained that to us, it was, we were pretty sympathetic to that, that train of thought. And, you know, maybe looking at it in a selfish perspective, as owners and operators of a wastewater treatment plant, we'd like to have neighbors that, that aren't working there every day. You know, we, the storage units, we think would be a great neighbor. I don't believe this applicant necessarily is entirely devoted the idea of developing the whole property with storage units. Like, there probably will be some outdoor storage, like boat, RV kind of storage and that type of thing as well. So, because it, in our view, really would be a good neighbor use to the wastewater treatment plant, and because otherwise, we don't necessarily see somebody wanting to put, you know, maybe a big office building there, or something like that, that for other reasons might be, be beneficial for the city, we're very comfortable recommending that this be approved.
So, question from our meeting on the possibility of our new off-ramp, the off-ramp?
Yeah.
We have the, they're proposing a, the, the route to get Highway 6 from 27 North will come right along here. Will that push this frontage road back, or what's, what, how is that going to change the front of his property here?
You know, I hadn't thought about that. But I think you're right. When, when they, whether it's with this next round of improvements like we talked about, or 15 years into the future, when they do the full build-out of the improvements between the new interchange that's going to be at 2700 North.
Right.
Where right now, there's just a bridge over I-15 by the Ford dealership, and the Main Street interchange. When that is entirely built out, there's going to be a new lane dedicated... there's going to be a new lane dedicated to carry traffic just from that interchange to the Main Street off-ramp. That probably would impact this.
The concern is how much cross-traffic you have from the, that first Springville exit, and people getting, realizing, oh, I gotta get over, and people getting on. They weren't going to do it in the first phase, but members of the committee said, could we, could we tie that to the first phase, because we're concerned about safety in that area?
Exactly, yep.
So I don't think there is a frontage road.
There's not a frontage road, but it'll kind of be like a frontage road, I think, is what.
Yeah, looks, looks like it could be, but yeah, it looks like it's just, just nothing right now.
I guess, and I'm at the risk of sounding like I'm, I'm trying to really promote this concept, if they ever did need some additional right-of-way for that, if this were a carport, in essence, for boat and RV storage.
Be pretty easy to.
Yeah, that'd be better than. Something like that, so.
For sure. Is that all it would be intended for, is vehicle storage, or are they going to actually put some units in?
I've only talked with the applicant, we haven't seen a plan, but he, so from what he specifically has discussed, you might have seen some of the similar kind of facilities next to I-15 going through St. George, so I can picture what he's talking about, you know, really, honestly, just big carports, where people can park their, their toys. From the calls that we have gotten in our office over the years about where people can do that legally, I, I believe there's a demand for that, that kind of space, so.
All right, let's move into public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, got it.
I make a motion, this planning commission recommends approval of the Oaklberry Trucking self-storage overlay zone, and subject to staff's conditions.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Ernest?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Mendenhall, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, that passes. Looks like we've just got one more thing, is that right? Title 15 amendments?
Yep.
Okay, let's, let's truck through it.
Does anybody have any questions about it?
I don't think so.
The idea is really simple, we have a couple of buildings in town, and in the past, we've had a couple of other buildings in town. If you think about the Food for Less building, that sat vacant for a long time. We've had some big manufacturing buildings that at different times have sat vacant. The concept simply is to provide a property owner on a limited temporary basis, to have an opportunity to use properties in a limited way with explicit conditions while they're seeking a permanent tenant. That's really the essence of what we're talking about, and of course, this, the catch is that we're talking about uses that otherwise would not be allowed in those zoning districts. In essence, right now, just talking about storage, let's say, you know, really, that's what it amounts to. We, as staff, see benefits clearly. If there is a concern that we have, I appreciate the letter that I gave you from Mr. Thompson. I think he helps us understand, at least this was reassuring for me, and we had talked through the concept a couple of months ago, you know, well before we got that letter, which is that, you know, they intend to lease the space maybe for that storage use at 20 or 30% of what they would lease the space to for a retail user. I appreciate that because sometimes temporary uses become very permanent, and we are not interested in, you know, more warehouse space on Main Street or US 6. In fact, probably my biggest motivation in, in supporting this concept is that I love the idea of keeping a property owner and a broker interested in using those buildings long-term for retail uses, and have them continuously engaged in trying to find retail tenants for those spaces, rather than to do what we've seen happen in a lot of other communities, where, you know, the petition instead is, you know, to have the whole building converted into climate-controlled storage units, or different things like that. Maybe residential uses, which for these two sites, that right now are the ones that come to mind, and this, this conceivably would, would fit for other properties as well, but they're great locations in long-term. I absolutely think they're going to be home to businesses that the, the community will appreciate having, and, you know, to uses that will monetarily benefit the city, so.
So do you see this applying to the Kmart building as well? Have they approached you or said anything that they would like to do this? Or is this just Shopko?
We have not had the same kind of discussions with the Kmart owners, but.
So when you say the two sites, are you talking about Shopko and what's the second?
And Kmart, I am talking about Kmart, because it's the other big vacant building in town.
Community Development Director, is that person the sole giver of the temporary use? I know, I'm just saying, in this case, it'd be you or whoever, yeah.
Yep.
You're the, you're the judge, jury, executioner on that?
Yep.
I have a question about one of the other parts of here, Title 15, and that is the animals in the city. I want, just. I just want a clarification. I wasn't aware, well, the way that this is written, can anyone in the, in the city that has a half an acre have a horse, or a cow, or a pig, or sheep?
Yes, the current code actually does allow, this is just amending that slightly.
So, in my area.
I can't hear you.
In my, in my area specifically, in my area specifically, there are a number of lots that are half-acre and larger. And so if one of my neighbors said, hey, I want to put a corral right below you and paddock my horse there, he's well within his rights to do that?
If he can fit a corral on his property, yes. I mean, you have to have the proper ability to house or hold the animal, but yes, technically, yes, you could.
I don't want technically, I want, I want with all, all certainty, because I had an individual who said, I'm going to buy these two lots, and I'm going to raise, I'm going to raise a couple of horses here.
You could. Especially if you bought the two lots, you definitely have enough room to do that.
If he had two lots, are those two lots, or are those a single lot once he buys them both?
He can subdivide them into one.
He can subdivide them, or he could. He can combine them as well, too.
Then he has enough, he has enough property to be able to do that.
Yeah, he, well, technically, I, I assume that these lots are at least.
Oh, they're mostly hillside.
Or are they half-acre each?
The ones that he's looking at, one is just under a half an acre, and the other one's probably a little over an acre, or over half an acre, so combine.
So he's almost a full acre with combining those, so yes, he could.
Yeah, but right underneath my deck, huh?
One part of the language of the code that we've had a few conversations with people about over the years is that it says a half of an acre dedicated for the animal. So let's say that's 22,000 square feet, I mean, so technically, you might need 26,000 or 7,000 square feet of lot area.
And would he have to fence that?
That's, I, we have used that as the way to define how much they have, and whether they meet that half-acre threshold or not.
I guess the reason I'm, I, I'm confused by this is that I don't know of anywhere, there were some animal rights on the east side on one-acre lots, and it was designed that way and advertised as animal rights. Since then, I'm not aware of any, any place in the city where anyone is attempting to, to house large animals, and it's.
What's kind of funny is, we've, we've had properties downtown, you know, in the original flats, that are well over a half of an acre where something could have. But they didn't, but otherwise, we have the project that's right off Canyon Road, like 2000 East, there are folks there that have animals.
That's the ones that have the one-acre lots, right?
I don't think they're quite.
Well, one of them, one of them is, is where, where they talked about that the Breathweight property had horses on it. And also, they were grandfathered in, because before that was even annexed into the city, that house was built, and they, and they, that was agricultural. But I don't know of, of any new property that's been built in the last even 20 years that is horse, that is, you know, I know of some pot-bellied pigs, and I know of chickens, and a few things like that, even a goat or two, but I don't, I don't know of anyone that is, has large animals.
We haven't approved a development in the last 16 years.
For horses?
Has had enough space for somebody to legally have a large animal.
Market's pretty good, maybe I'll sell.
So the pot-bellied pig, the chickens, dogs, cats, parakeets, whatever, those fall under the regular animal ordinance, you're allowed to have up to so many. Pot-bellied pigs have to be registered just like a dog or a cat does.
What, was there anything specifically that triggered this change? Was there something that happened in the city or with the resident?
No, this was just simply cleanup. There was some issue in the animal, in the regular animal ordinance, what I would call household animal ordinance, that was contradictory. The sentence read infraction slash misdemeanor. They are all infractions as far as the criminal code goes, so they are not misdemeanors. We needed to clean up that, and this was part of that cleanup, it's simply just rewording or clarifying some of the words.
You're not changing anything really in here?
No, we're not.
So if, if the property is less than a half an acre, are you allowed? Where does it specify what animals you're allowed to have on less than?
Less than a half, you are not, you can have your regular household animal-type.
Pot-bellied pig is considered a household item?
That, we went through that a few years ago. There was one person that I'm aware of that asked for it. We gave it to him, and then I don't think they actually kept the pig.
What about a Shetland pony that's smaller than a Great Dane?
We don't even go there.
Well, I see that we can have four ostriches. I like that, oh, anyway. That is something that I wanted a clarification on when I saw that in the, in, in this Title 15 amendment, so.
Any other questions?
All right, anyone want to make a motion for this one?
I'll make a motion that, are we recommending this, by the way?
Sorry, I can't.
Oh, we got a public hearing.
We've not gone into public hearing yet. Let's move into public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this Title 15 amendment? Seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing.
Do we need to wait for Greg?
Are we recommending to the, to the city council that this be adopted?
Correct, yep. If that's what you want to recommend.
I make that emotion, I make that a motion that we recommend to the city council that the proposed changes in Title 15 be adopted.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I thought Dave was going to oppose, he's got something else to say.
All right.
The next item is adjourned.
Not on that.
So, does anyone, anything else that, before we adjourn, that you need to address?
Please help me put a finer point on what you'd like me to tell Fieldstone about next steps. Is it to work with them to find a time for a field trip? Is it to work with them to find time in a work session? Is it to tell them, just simply to proceed with a public hearing on the change and, you know, take their chances that way? And I, I really, really don't want you to feel at all that you have an obligation to give them airtime, or that staff's trying to push you in one direction or another, we're not.
My opinion on that would be a work session where we use technology. They can show us, I'm sure they've got developments they've already done, I mean, that's what they want to take us up to see.
I think we give them a timeframe.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't think we need a three-hour meeting.
Presentation time during a work session. Over Zoom or whatever, they call, they call in on it or?
Yeah, I mean, we could go longer than 10 minutes, but, but yeah, not three hours. But yeah, I would rather, I would rather a work session than a field trip.
We talked about work sessions, there's, there's three topics that were kind of brought up. We talked about with our master plan developments, maybe talking about, you know, fleshing that out a little bit, where we have some minimum lot sizes that could be a topic in a work discussion, work session. Looking at the, like, we talked about parking strips, we had a little bit of a conversation on those, and then going over this development enhancement overlay. Those are topics we could have in these work sessions we've been talking about, and then having that be part of, you know, a Fieldstone reviewing what they're going to propose, you know?
What's your appetite to do that?
Let me ask a question of the commissioners and you, Dave, about Fieldstone. We all familiar with Fieldstone?
They've got a little bit of history in the city, right?
I, I think we all understand Fieldstone, and I think we all under, well, you weren't there, but the basic discussion was that they wanted to build higher-density homes, or a higher-density within their subdivision as they have it now. And their, their proposal included the idea that it's better for the city because you have more people in a, in a smaller area. So those people help maintain roads and different things in that area, and it's better to have them clustered and in this little area, because you're not building as many roads and as many amenities other than, other than that.
It's very altruistic.
Yeah, and it's all great, and we've heard it on different levels and in different formats, you know, with other agencies, and, you know, I don't know that I need to hear that again. And they gave kind of a, gave a, that, that presentation that they gave us was kind of leading, just leading us that way, you know? And I've seen that kind of a presentation before. So I, I think we just need to have, you know, I don't know that we need to do the field trip like we were talking about, but we need to have a frank discussion about whether we need to fall off the cliff every time that someone wants higher density.
What's the property that they're, that, that we're even talking about? I'm not even sure what, where we're looking.
Now, Kevin, you're hitting on what I said earlier, I'd rather just see where they're proposing this higher density and what amount of density, just real quick snapshot of area zoning, where in the city, just so that I.
Take us to the city sites.
Just so that I can even just know whether or not I'm even going to have a chance of entertaining it.
They're the northern piece, right?
Right there.
Okay.
The better part of what's in green.
I remember now.
And that's technic, well, it's not technical, that's part of legacy farms.
It's not at all.
What's? It is not.
It's right next to all those, that, the orange lowers.
Dave, they want higher than R3.
Has it been annexed yet? It hasn't, has it?
They want higher density than R3.
There's has not.
So theirs is the green, which right now is rural residential.
I get it, but they want higher density than R3, which is pretty much surrounding this thing?
No, they want R3, that's what they want.
And what's the general plan?
It's going on both sides, yeah, I mean, it's going.
Mapleton will love it.
It's going, all of those on the other side of the road.
Mapleton will love it right there.
So, this whole area out here.
Mapleton.
Is planned for two units to the acre.
So it's a state?
This is an interesting anomaly. It's adjourned, so they turn the mics.
Do, do you want to?
Yes.
Your call, I, I don't think we're out of line if we do. But anyway, this is, this is what they're talking about, they have that in our contract, and as funny as it might seem, this property and this property are like night and day different.
In what way? One's the old gravel pit, right?
One's a gravel pit that's built with.
So many easements.
Going to have a lot, yeah, power lines.
Water lines.
It's going to need a lot of work.
And different things and the Fieldstone piece is devoid of all those encumbrances and has beautiful views and is akin maybe to what is developing across the tracks in Mapleton, you know, really. So, that's partly why the council, back in 2016, included that property with the general plan amendment to say, "This is the area that we're preserving in Spanish Fork for less density." There's a whole backstory to that that was years in the making before we got to that 2016 change. You know, like with the other thing, staff, our marching orders right now are, the general plan is what it is and.
Well, and their, their argument.
Two units to the acre.
Their argument is that with density, that there should be a tiered approach, right? And so, you've got that high-density portion that the city owned. Next to that should be a little bit, you know, a little more medium density and then, then move into the low density.
I'm going to poke a little fun at them because you're right, that's what they said. And it's funny that their tier included everything that they owned, you know?
But nothing else.
Interesting tier. It was a 40-acre transition.
All on their property.
Yeah, with their property getting the most advantageous part of that step down from high density to less density. But anyway, that all being said, work session, I appreciate that.
Oh, scroll back out. Where, is this the boundary, Spanish Fork boundary right here?
It was just annexed.
So, that's the current city boundary.
Okay, keep going, sorry, keep going.
What works for you guys best for work sessions? What time of day, what day of the week? Do you want to look at some dates right now? You have a preference?
I like the, I, personally, I kind of like the idea of maybe like the Wednesday before meeting. That way, we have an idea of what this agenda is going to be. We'll finalize, but we'll have an idea. I don't know if that's two meetings too close together for the rest of the commissioners.
I think we need one now. And then, take a look on a month-by-month basis.
So, are you saying we meet every Wednesday?
No.
No, 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 no.
No. I golf every Wednesday.
The third week of September, sometime then? Which I might have to ask that we, we hold it on a Tuesday night that week, the 22nd, instead of the 23rd because of the cities and towns thing, the 23rd, 24th, 25th. But did that week work for you guys? I think that's good for me.
I forgot that's.
So, 22nd is what we're looking at?
Yeah, again, if that works for you.
Is the legal, oh, that's going to be, is that going to be virtual, the legal cities and towns or?
Maybe a hybrid.
I was going to say, is there anything for the commissioners? Last year, there was a few things that.
I, I've hesitated to bring it up because I don't think it's the best use of your time. If anybody's really interested. I think Cities and Towns does annual training and COVID has kind of gutted what I think the best part of it is for this year, so.
If you can't go and get free pencils and candy, then no reason.
We know the president of Cities and Towns, we have a good relationship with them, so.
I, I think the 22nd sounds good.
5 o'clock, is that a good time, 5:30, 6?
6.
6 would be better for me, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, do you mind penciling that in? 22nd at 6, we'll send materials out ahead of time. We will have a good idea of what will be on your agenda the following week that night. And I've got these four items. We'll have that on the agenda and I'll invite you to present and take some time that night with an understood time limit.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Guys, thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone want to?
Because they're pretty hefty agenda.
Make a motion, I guess I can. I make a motion that we adjourn. All right, we are adjourned.